Regular meeting for July fourteenth and if everyone could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so tonight we're going to start with a public hearing. It's around a memo of understanding with the Simsbury Soccer Club. They've come work with the town manager to create a proposal for some long-term use of Curtis Park. And we wanted to hear from the public to get their input on this project. We'll be discussing it later tonight. We will most likely not vote on it tonight because there's been some questions that have come up, you know, that we'll need to do to revise the draft that's out there. And we also need the town attorney to complete looking at it. But we are going to start with the public hearing. Everybody in a public hearing has three minutes. And the first person I have on the public hearing is Diane Nash. And I'm going to set my timer. Diane, you want to come?
I'm in bed here. Do you want to do them first?
So that's Heather.
Heather's there. She's calling in for the meeting. But thank you for mentioning that.
I actually hadn't intended, Diane Nash, five very good. I hadn't intended to speak at this hearing. But I had a bunch of whys for our selectmen meeting. I've decided to add in my why to this thing. Why are we giving exclusive use for eight years on town-owned property in exchange for negative and damaging environmental impact improvements? Why? Even in the memorandum of understanding, it is missing, unless I missed it, that there's a bonding component to that, about remediation should these negative things occur. I didn't see it, maybe it's in there. But if it's not, I ask why? I also ask why this isn't a public hearing. It's a public hearing because you, the selectmen, I assume, said, we do want to hear from the public. Why isn't it a public hearing? It's public land, it's our land. Why would we not have a public hearing now, giving a twenty-year exclusive use to a private agency? That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
The next person is Kristen Dubois.
Hi, everyone. I know, that's right. I'm Kristen Dubois. A little background, I started playing Simsbury Soccer Club when I was five, fifty years ago. I have five kids that have also played for Simsbury Soccer along the way. I'm the uniform coordinator for Simsbury Soccer. On any given season, you may or may not know that we do play in the fall and in the spring. We have anywhere from eight hundred and fifty to a thousand kids in either season out there playing soccer. And we did in the past, used to use multiple different areas in town. And the news for Simsbury, we have lots of activities in this town. We have lots of families that want to gather as a community, whether it's for baseball, or lacrosse, or soccer, or whatever. But our town has, you know, an opportunity for so many families, not just families that currently live here, but I also sell real estate, families that are looking at moving here. Part of what I do as a Realtor is also show them those facilities. What are your kids interested in? What is your family interested in? And so, while people are using schools and neighborhoods and lots of different reasons to choose our town, part of what they're using is youth sports. And part of what I use is town-owned land that you use to support all of our kids and families, not just our kids playing sports, but our families as a whole. Because we spend a tremendous amount of time doing that over the years that we raise our kids here. So, over time, because we do have so many different activities in this town, we primarily use Curtis Park. We don't use the entirety of Curtis Park every year because we have to give those fields a rest from time to time. So, we do our best. But having consistent quality fields and the ability to schedule and use that facility exclusively and not schedule around other organizations creates an environment where you can have what we have, which is U five through U fifteen kids playing soccer. And in order to facilitate that for so many families, we use that facility, you know, fall and spring. We spend a tremendous amount of time, as does the town upkeep, and making it a great facility for everybody. So, if we didn't have exclusive use for that property, as I said, we have to step aside and let fields rest. If we constantly had lots of organizations using all of that space, we might have a bigger problem because it might not be the great soccer fields that we're looking at if you have football, lacrosse, and everything else have the same facility. So...
That's time's up.
That's why I'm asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have Jason Crisula.
Yep. Good evening, Jason Crisula. I'm twelve Spruce Lane, I've got three kids in the Latimer District. All three of them play soccer, play for Simsbury Soccer. My oldest is twelve, I've got a nine-year-old, and I've also got a six-year-old. And we're at Curtis seven days a week, to be quite honest. So, I'm definitely for the exclusivity because it seems as if, right now, all the sports have kind of coalesced to their little corners of Simsbury. And for soccer, soccer is Curtis, Curtis is soccer. We're trying to make the best that we can with the Curtis facility. And if you look at the other towns across, or where we actually compete, if you look at West Hartford, if you look at Green Bay, if you look at Glastonbury, there are starting to be these spots where soccer clubs are starting to coalesce. And they're really starting to make a community. And I think what we want to do with Curtis, long-term, is make sure that we have exclusivity, improve the facilities. But I think what we're also trying to do is make that more of a community where there's a home base for the kids, a home base for the families, and one that, like, after your game, you could stick around for the next thirty minutes, the next sixty minutes, and enjoy your time with your friends, your family, whoever else is there. So, anyways, that's what I've got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Tom Carroll.
Good evening, I'm Tom Carroll of Eleven Homestead. I, despite being one of the younger members of our board, have four kids and have been in the program for seven years as a coach. I'm also on the board helping with the capital campaign. Now, one of the reasons that we really want this memorandum of understanding is because we do have big plans for the fields as a Simsbury Soccer organization. We've, over the years, have invested at least two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars into building those fields out. We've put in Field A, we've done a significant amount with the drainage situation over there. So that way, our kids in our community do have a place to play. Now, as we look into kind of what the future holds for Curtis Park, it is very important, in order for us to continue to improve those fields, is for us to have a memorandum of understanding so that way we can go ahead and raise additional funds to continue to improve town land. So that, to me, is a major component as to why I think this should be approved. Because as a club, we want to continue to give back, right? We want to give back to our players, to our coaches, to the overall environment. And we want to make sure that they have a safe place to play. And in order for us to do that, we need to continue to invest in our fields. I view it as a benefit, right? The town doesn't have to put significant money into the fields if Simsbury Soccer Club is willing to raise their hand and say, hey, if we have this piece, we're willing to, you know, continue to try to make significant efforts on the fundraising front to improve the field. So, I view that as a big win. I think that's, you know, the main thing that I want to say. Everyone else has said a bunch, and, you know, I agree with their side. Like Kristen, I'm also a Realtor, so I agree that, you know, we sell the community, and this is just one of our ways to do it. You know, if this was about baseball, we'd be selling Memorial Fields, right? But with our soccer families, we sell Curtis Park. So, thank you.
Tom. Susan Olson.
I'm not talking about Curtis Park.
Okay, are you just here for public audience?
No, I want to talk about something different.
Okay, well, we...
So, I'm okay with waiting until Curtis Park is...
So, this is, the public hearing is Curtis Park? If you meant to talk just in public, I'll put you on that list.
Oh, oh.
It's okay.
It's okay, it's not a big deal. So, we're not penalizing anybody. Okay. So, the next person I have on this, on the public hearing list, is Mike Doyle.
I mean, not just, but I didn't realize that we were just so busy.
It's got to be a little bit of a showman today. Mike Doyle, forty-eight Sunset Hill.
He has props.
For those that don't know, I happen to sit in Curtis's chair at least once a month on the Board of Finance. But I am here in front of you today as part of the Simsbury Soccer Club. And as you notice, this hat is rather aged. I have coached in Simsbury on every soccer field in town in this hat and painted my house, which you can tell from the front. Twenty years ago, we were everywhere in town. Now, because of, and Kristen kind of stole my thunder a little bit with what I was going to say, we probably should have coordinated a little better. We were everywhere in town. You could drive around Simsbury and see soccer happening anywhere in town. And now, there's a bunch of other awesome youth sports activities in town. We're all competing for the same space. I don't know about the environmental impact of some of these opportunities, but what I do know is, we have been a steward of that property and a partner with the town. When the town, when Tom comes and says, hey, we need a lining machine, or something along those lines, we find the money and help lessen the burden on our budgets to be able to pay for that equipment. And then that equipment gets used at Memorial and elsewhere too. Right? Or down at Iron Horse, if we're lining things for the awesome things that happen there now. And before the PAC, soccer was always happening on those fields. Right? So, please, please, please pass this MOU. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where do I get that hat?
Yeah, I've coached though, thirty years.
This is like twenty-two, twenty-three years, something like that?
Jesse Schofield.
Hi, Jesse Schofield, nine Fairview Street. I want to speak out in favor of the licensing agreement, getting the twenty-year exclusivity. I've been a volunteer coach for the past eight seasons between one of both of my boys. It's a really good program, I loved every season. It's really great to include everyone, get them to love soccer, be involved in some way. Also, more than happy to pay registration fees and other money that are going to go towards a capital campaign like this, not necessarily coming from the town. A lot of the fields have different quirks to them, especially Oracle, and maybe the F-Fields in Curtis. But I think this is a really good opportunity to fix some of the issues that Curtis has when it's in use that can be done with money from the soccer club instead of the town. Nightlighting, I know we always have an issue trying to obtain that in the fall. To have that more permanent would be great, and increase the play. Bathrooms are another one. Any families there with younger kids know the pain of trying to go to the Port of Johns and deal with those for little ones over something that's a little more usable. The trail in the playground is another one. Sometimes we're playing games like wander in the woods and collect sticks and stuff with little kids. Be great to have a trail and a playground to play with, and it'd also be good for other Simsbury residents to use. And another note, improve parking. So, right now, if you've gone by Curtis, there's kind of two segmented parking. Everyone's coming in and exiting the same area, it's dirt lots. They're always a worry and danger for kids going around, walking in and out while people are trying to drive or park somewhere and not paying attention. So that would help solve it by having some kind of flow or a path to go around. And the last note I have, you know, if you see some of these improvements, they really do change what you're going to plan to do. When we go to Summers to play a travel game, our whole family will go, extended family will go. We know we can get food, coffee, other things around because they have all the same amenities, they're much more comfortable to be there and enjoy, compared to other fields where you're just going to be a parent with a player going over, going right back because there's not much to do there, and you don't want to bring the whole family and have to hoof it across the hallway for bathrooms or other issues you might have. So, it's important.
Thank you, Jesse. Susan Messino.
Susan Messino, forty-one Madison Lane. My son plays soccer. I have zero issue with the soccer club having top priority for Curtis Park. But I think exclusive use is really putting a real burden on the public in this big piece of public land to say exclusive use for twenty years, possibly extended, which means possibly indefinitely. I don't see where there's a problem, that other teams are damaging those fields right now. So maybe we should revisit the top priority for whenever you need it, for as how long as you need it. If it is getting damaged by others, we could revisit this. There are serious environmental concerns. This is a floodplain, prime farmland, next to a wild and scenic river. It's not a place for artificial turf, which can wash off. There's toxic issues, there's health issues, there's injury issues, all kinds of stuff with artificial turf. The lighting would have to be wildlife-sensitive lighting because this is a wild and scenic river, which is a major migratory quarter with all kinds of special species there. So, I know what some people may see as improvements is actually damaging this priceless things that we have here, that you can't fix if they're broken. And it pains me, with all the incredible things we have in Simsbury, to have this asset, public asset, next to a wild and scenic river, and instead of showing kids the bugs and the plants and the beauty, take them fishing, do something like that, we have to build them a playground. This is why we're broken, because we don't understand what we have.
Thank you. Ben Berger.
Evening, everyone. Ben Berger, eighteen Joshua Drive. Thank you for the opportunity. As you folks know, I'm the president of the soccer club, have been on the board for twenty years in some capacity. And I just want to, again, say who we are, so everyone understands. We're a five-oh-one-C-three with over a thousand kids playing in the soccer program. We represent more than a third of the K-38 school population in the town of Simsbury. We're big, and we want to put that horsepower behind something that we're really excited about, which is a project to improve Curtis. But that's not why we're here, for that project. We're here for the memorandum of understanding. The project has its own hoops to jump through and to duck under. We would have to get all the right approvals to do it. But in order to raise the funds that we need to raise, in order to make the improvements that, for all the reasons you've heard, we need to make, this is step one, so I can go to my donors and I can go to my folks and move the ball forward. And the truth is, over the last time that I've been on the club, I'm going to double Tom's number, we've put half a million dollars piecemeal into those fields. But now, we want to do something bigger and grander, to make it the complex that this town deserves. And it is town land, and we're a town organization that wants to improve town land. We want to raise the money to do it. And this license agreement is the right and the next step to do it. We're excited about adding things like walking paths and trails and all that to make it even, even better facility for the community. But the point is right, when those fields were designed, they were never intended for the amount of play that we use them for. And they're being deteriorated and beat up. And, you know, it's an attractive asset to have Curtis Park in Simsbury, but it's not the attractive asset it was. And what we want to do would be part of the solution for that. And like I said, there's a lot of us, we have a lot of horsepower, we're really excited about this, but this is, you know, the step that we need to take in order to move it forward. I've been excited to get the, you know, the approval from Parks and Rec, excited for the vote that we had here a few months ago. And now, we want to get this over the finish line so that the next level of hard work can begin with this organization that has, puts in thousands of volunteer hours every year, puts in tens of thousands of dollars into the Culture, Parks and Rec budget on an annual basis with our fees, and we're really excited about it. And so, what the project is and the approvals and all, that's the next step. This is for the MOU. And I don't know what the process is for this. I have an email and note in my pocket from the president of the baseball, Little League, who because of the fact that he's got three teams in championship games over the day and tomorrow, couldn't be here. I can give it to you as part of the record, but being supportive and, you know, lending his support and his organization's support behind this effort. We're part of the community, and we want to do something great for the community, and this is the first step for us.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Do we have anybody else here that wants to speak on the Simsbury Soccer Club? So, I have Joan.
Is a hint here.
Yeah, I know, I see.
Ben, if you would like to submit that to Tom or somebody, the letter that you wrote?
Yep.
We have that, John, right, in the bag. Oh.
Oh no, I was pointing you out, player. Got a lot of arms in there.
Sure, go ahead. Yeah, Joan, go ahead, Joan.
John Coe, I am against this MOU completely. First of all, you're on Route three fifteen, which is a heavily traveled route, small, lot of traffic. Twenty years is total ridiculous to have, one club have twenty years exclusive rights. That is something which is absolutely a no-go, as far as I'm concerned. And I also want to note that I was assistant coach, soccer coach, for my son's team many, many years ago. So soccer is one of the things that I'm aware of in what's going on. And I also play tennis and pickleball, so I am interested in sports. However, this thing is an overkill, totally, totally overdone. There should be, it shouldn't be just between the town manager and the president of the soccer club. It should be for the people. We should know what's going on. There should be quarterly reports in writing, that's public information. The chief of police, has the chief of police said that he likes all this expansion going on? Do we have a letter from the chief of police saying that this is appropriate? Three fifteen is a mess right now. And to add this, you have the bike, you put it in a bike path, you put this in, it is totally inconsistent with extending what the soccer club does. I see the soccer club when I go to pickleball, it does a fantastic job. Hundreds of people are there, they are absolutely a wonderful, wonderful club. But to expand it to a point that it creates a problem in public safety is not something we should be doing. There should be absolutely no artificial turf. And special events, if they do put it in, should have no alcohol at all. And twenty-five-hundred dollars fee for the town should be increased to include the escalating cost of inflation. Twenty years is going to be two thousand five hundred dollars? This is the nuttiest MOU I've ever heard of. The whole thing should be ripped up, thrown out, and start again with the people in mind, not between the town manager and an exclusive club. So, as far as I'm concerned, the whole thing is overkill, overrun. People have done a fantastic job with what they have, and we don't need all these extra activities. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good job.
As a previous assistant soccer coach.
Susan? I have, Sally, I have you next.
Thank you. Susan Van Cleef, Sixth Mallard Circle, that's in Terrifield. So I just want to say also that soccer is the utmost awesome sport. I was a teacher, it was the only sport I ever watched. I'm not that big into sports, so I love watching those kids on three fifteen playing soccer. But, and my attitude is that I think this MOU is a good idea considering all the interaction that the soccer club has with the town. It probably should have been done a while ago, considering they're sharing the upkeeps of the field. So I think it's a really good idea. I have some concerns about it, and I think it's a little difficult to talk about the MOU without talking a little bit about the plans that are in it because I think those plans, in some ways, inform what should be in the MOU. So, I am, twenty years does seem like a long time. I have a reason why I think it's a long time. The environment is changing rapidly due to climate change, and twenty years is a long time to predict in terms of what changes might be made or what management might need to be made down there. So I think it's a long time for that reason. And I would, you know, consider making it shorter, though there's always a process to renew it. Also, the exclusive use part is for parcel A. And I also feel that this is a public piece of property, and having exclusive use to a public piece of property doesn't make sense to me. I also was a little bit confused because it does say in three C that the town can use parcel A from March to November if they actually inform the soccer club. So I was a little confused because that sounds more like priority use than exclusive use. So, I just feel like that exclusive use is not appropriate, but they should have priority use for their games. And the last thing that I'm mostly concerned about is the impact. And I understand that down the road, to actually do a lot of the work they're doing, not just the artificial turf, they're going to have to go to inland wetlands, planning, zoning, possibly the state, and all of their plans should be run through there and possibly revised and updated. But when I look at the MOU, I don't see anything that takes into account if there's any issues. I'd say they have to pay for testing, but what if there's a major issue? I spent a lot of time researching turf fields back in February, and it specifically says that it's ongoing research and on those, on the safety for both the environment and the people paying on it. And I just think there needs to be some more specific type of language, or as Diane suggested, bonding. It doesn't say how much insurance. I looked at some MOUs from other towns, they literally say how much insurance they need to have. And I just feel like, either, if you want to write the MOU now because it seems to make sense, so they can start, okay, sorry.
Time's up, sorry.
I think you should come back to the MOU if you get approval for the turf. Or...
Thank you. Sal?
Thank you so much, you're welcome. We'll get it in the record.
Hi, I'm Sally Rieger, nine Stodmore Road. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the Lower Farmington River and Salmon Brook Wild and Scenic Committee, and as the town-appointed representative to the committee. We are very concerned about the possible use of the artificial turf in Curtis Park floodplain because it has the potential to negatively impact water quality, biodiversity, and recreation, which are three of the special values for which the river was designated by the federal government as wild and scenic. Artificial turf typically contains known carcinogens, neurotoxins, mutagens, and endocrine disruptors in the form of volatile toxic compounds and heavy metals. It includes lead, arsenic, mercury, cadmium, and the PFAS group of chemicals. And these have been shown in laboratory studies to leach into the water. So at a storm or a flood event with a turf field in the floodplain, it could impact aquatic organisms and wildlife, and also ultimately fishermen that eat fish out of the river. And not much is known about the direct health effects on players and on the maintenance people who work on the fields, particularly long-term effects that may not show up for ten or twenty years. And we're talking about little kids starting out on this. PFAS is in the plastic of the turf, and it's in the sheet of the plastic that's at the bottom, as well as in the grass blades. PFAS is linked to immune dysfunction, neurological problems, and cardiovascular disease, and cancer. And PFAS chemicals don't break down very easily. So wear and tear on the fields creates little tiny pieces of plastic, microplastics. They are found in human lungs and the placenta and blood, and they have the potential to be inhaled by players on the field. And also, can be ingested through the fish that fishermen are eating. And also can be ingested through the fish that fishermen are eating. Plastic underneath prevents the floodplain from functioning by being able to filter the water through the soil and the vegetation. So it's pretty clear from current research that artificial turf in a floodplain could have a negative effect on water quality, biological diversity and on the recreational uses of the field. Natural grass fields, perhaps organically managed, are an alternative. They're successfully used in the city of Springfield. And they say although it's more expensive and more work to get started with that, in the long term, it is not and it's much, much safer. So, I think Simsbury and the soccer club have an opportunity to learn about that.
Thank you Sally.
And I have a letter that was sent out. I know Wendy and Mark, you've probably seen that, but could everybody have a copy?
Sure.
And I have some additional copies that I'd be happy to share with anybody else who's interested.
Why don't you just leave them on Tom's desk on the corner or something and if anybody wants to pick it up.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is anyone else here to talk about the Simsbury Soccer Club? Lori?
I am Lori Boyko from fifteen Oakhurst Road. I too have had one or more players play in Simsbury Soccer for over fifteen years. They're all graduated now, but I spent many, many nights at Curtis Park. Here we are once again to talk about catering to a small, literally exclusive group. The word exclusive has been used multiple times. To clarify, while they run some town programs, it's not a town entity. It is a private nonprofit organization. And for the vast majority of participants, you have to try out to play on a team at all. Number of people we're talking about, players, is somewhere around eight hundred, give or take, by my count, out of twenty-five thousand in the entire town. So who benefits from this? In every action that the selectman or any other town board takes, the question in all of your minds should be, how does this benefit the broad electors of the town? And the town as a whole? I read the MOU. I found it to be a very one-sided agreement. I was asking myself, who writes these things? We continue to maintain the property for the most part unless there's a soccer event. And we get a very, very nominal amount of money each year. We don't need all of these improvements. Most of us who spoke had our children play on these fields for decades and they were just fine. We may need tweaks, upgrades, maintenance every now and then, but we don't need to turn this into a soccer stadium. I don't understand why we have all decided all of a sudden to become Westport wannabes. The memorandum of understanding says Simsbury Soccer Club may make improvements if they have the fiscal and physical ability. That doesn't give us anything if we want improvements. That gives them. They can if they want to and they can just say they don't have the money or the physical ability to if they don't want to. The MOU talks about the ability to have advertising, which I presume they will get the money for. And I realize other facilities have that, but this is like literally a billboard if there's advertising on Curtis. That's right on a main road. The lights are a huge concern. Who pays for the electric? Do we really want lights for night games while we're advertising and focusing on dark skies? Advocating and focusing on dark skies? In retrospect, do we even want to encourage youth in sports into all hours of the night? I can tell you, my friends and I have had tons of conversations wishing there were not lights at the baseball field because we were there till ten o'clock at night. I also would like to ask you to keep the.
Yeah, Lori, your time's up.
I'd like to ask you to keep the public hearing open because I think people have more to say and it's the summer and not everybody can tell.
Thank you, yep.
Everybody.
Oh, yours is louder. Um, so is there anybody else here for the public hearing? And so I realized, because it wasn't a real public hearing, I didn't ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
That's okay.
And I'm going to not make a motion to close the public hearing considering there's a lot of content to discuss, to weigh in and that this is going to come back to us in a revised motion. We will get to that when we get to agenda item B. Um, so with that, I'm going to move to public audience. It's over here. And we have a list of people here for public audience and the first person here is Diane Nash.
This is my big why night. At the last board's elected meeting, I requested the taped meeting of the open space committee be turned over SCP day. So I and others could hear the discussions surrounding the decisions. It's not been done. Why and was any discussion held at that meeting or the subsequent meeting under mowing for maintenance of open space property? Since it was voted not to sell the parcel of land on the corner of Owensbrook Boulevard and Firetown Road, the property has no longer been maintained by the town. Why? Tonight is discussion about giving exclusive use of Curtis Park to the soccer club. Why? Selling our assets, contracting away uses of our assets. And now even the care and maintenance of our asset is so contrary to Simsbury's attention to its unique natural gifts. And the uncommon citizens of Simsbury who care and stay involved and volunteer. This is so, what's happening is so divergent from what has always happened in this town. We first lost the reading aloud of our public hearing audience letters. And now they're not even attached to the minutes. Now taped recordings of our meetings are denied for viewing. If the public is not informed, how are we going to stay engaged? And maybe that is the answer to my why. Maybe you don't want us engaged.
Thank you.
It's a healthy to have that.
Sally, are you on here for?
No, I signed up. I'm I'm very sorry. I'm ignorant.
No problem, no problem. It's really simple. Um, William O'Brien. William O'Brien.
I think he accidentally signed those sheets.
Okay. Don't remember William O'Brien on that other sheet. That's why she threw me there, Mike. There is no William O'Brien.
He left, you know, like.
A mystery person. Mike Doyle, are you on both sheets?
I am on both sheets.
She's got two hats.
Really? I came wearing two hats tonight.
Oh, two hats, literally, got it.
Mike Doyle for you Sunset Hill Road. Uh, I'm gonna put this back on for a second. So, um, the word exclusive got used a lot tonight. And every kid in Simsbury, whether they have special needs or are an old fart like me, can play on those fields. And when I started playing on those fields twenty-five years ago, they were some of the best fields in the state. They are not that now, but that's not why I'm standing here talking about that. It was mentioned that there is a significant number of players that, um, the rosters are very exclusive. There is a select program in town. It is one-third of the total population, right? At its, at its height, it was four hundred and twenty, four hundred and thirty players. It's a little smaller than that now. But it's not a thousand and it's nowhere near the majority of the players playing in Simsbury. It is inclusive, not exclusive. The Performing Arts Center, something else that is very near and dear to my heart and something else that's on your agenda tonight. I ask for your support. That's the end of my words. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Um, Susan?
Uh, Susan Messino, forty-one Madison Pla- Madison Lane. I wanna just mention that the reason why the fields may be difficult is because they're in a floodplain. And a floodplain is designed to handle the volatility of the river. So it gets wetter and muddier and all that kind of stuff. It's difficult to maintain sports fields in a floodplain. And it's going to flood, which will impact a whole bunch of things. But I added that to my other four points that I wanted to make. Um, one thing that I will follow up with is this past weekend, I was at the Vietnam Travel Memorial Wall, which was in Lenox, Massachusetts. Um, my uncle was killed in Vietnam and got a Silver Star and they had a special event. And it was really beautiful and it would be a phenomenal thing that Simsbury could host at the PACT perhaps. It's a long lead time if you apply for it. I'm not offering to do it, but I think if people are interested, I think the scouts would be interested. You know, the veterans, if you get a chance to see it. I think it's there for just one more day. But, um, we have a perfect, perfect place to host that. So I'll send a follow-up about that. Number two, now I have to be super quick, about the mowing. So we heard about it the last open space meeting, that the town would like help with maintenance for these tiny parcels that they don't wanna mow. I just wanted to come back. I know I offered on behalf of the Grange to mow these pieces. I'm willing to make good on that offer. The way that could happen is you could put out an RFP and say if anybody wants to do it, they can. It's our general standard protocol in town. If we lease land like farmland, we have an RFP, someone applies, we already have a lease agreement that we could use. So it's a very standard procedure. And, um, we would still keep it open to the public. Um, and we would like to work with the pollinators, the land trust, um, the garden clubs to kind of make it something nice and attractive and a real role model. Um, and you can end the lease anytime and kick us out. It's not exclusive and whatever. I'm just making good on that and we have a standard process we can do for that in town. Um, the other thing that I wanna mention is related to the minutes of the last meeting. So I made some very specific comments about making sure that the public record, which is our historical record, has the information that needs to be in the public record. And I spoke specifically about the discussion of the twenty-four unrestricted acres at Meadowwood and why we've been talking about it for a while. At Open Space in terms of swapping that land for land that's less environmentally sensitive and is not good agricultural land. Um, and how there was presentations by Hartford Audubon, we talked to DEEP, we talked to Trust for Public Land. There's a lot of pieces that have already been put into place to support that swap. And then Doug Beach came on behalf of Hartford Audubon and talked about all the special stuff that's there. And he has credentials. If you look at the minutes, which are in your packet tonight, it does not say anything about what either of us said. How long is this gonna keep on happening and why do we keep on coming here and saying something if no one is able to know what we're talking about? And sometimes I get up here and I think, should I yell? Should I cry? Should I vomit? Am I not making myself clear? I'm honestly wondering. You're the people in charge of the town. We need to know what's going on. We pay for everything here. I'm, I'm not, I'm starting to yell. I'm just letting you know I'm not gonna cry and I'm not gonna vomit, but it's very, it's extremely distressing. I, I don't know how to express that more clearly.
John Olsen?
Um. I'm just in the audience.
Oh, well, thanks for letting us introduce you. Um, do we have anyone else here for public audience? Oh, we have more people. Okay, I'll put Joan on, Linda. Jeff. Okay. Okay, Joan?
Oh, Dave.
Dave.
John Coe, twenty-six Wickham Drive. Recently, the, uh, the town fulfilled my freedom of information request of all communications between Steve Antonio and the Planning Community Development Department regarding sign violations on the Antonio properties. It appears from the emails that I received that Deputy Selectman Steve Antonio is receiving special treatment. The emails state, self-storage signs. The panels were not approved by the Design Review Board and the Planning Office as part of the freestanding sign plan. Trailhead printing, new business sign. This sign requires a zoning permit attached along with the sign plan to be reviewed by Design Review Board and approved by our office prior to installation. A letter dated March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-five, Antonio Building, uh, Restaurant Building. Uh, the painted sign with plastic letters was approved as part of a nineteen ninety-four sign plan. Unfortunately, the quote "call your mother" sign was not part of that plan. Can you please remove that sign and refrain from posting additional permanent outside of approval this process? Sign remains on the building. Storage facility. The temporary sign for storage facility was still nailed to the permanent sign. Please adhere to the regulations to avoid further complaints. Deputy First Selectman Steve Antonio has displayed a complete disregard for the zoning regulations although only many businesses in town that require plans and signage approved from the zoning commission. Deputy First Selectman Steve Antonio has been on boards, commissions and oversees the land use of the town, including business groups that are aware of zoning regulations. Steve Antonio posted his qualifications on the Democratic Town Committee website, past or present boards, commissioned volunteer work, zoning board of appeals, chairman, Design Review Board Chairman, Building Code of Appeals, Simsbury Main Street Board Member. However, Deputy Selectman Steve Antonio has knowingly and continually disregarded the zoning requirements assigned on his business property. Deputy Second Selectman Steve Antonio takes a sign retreat with information on his outdoor storage facility in a B-two zone. The outdoor storage facility must be part of a permanent business established in a B-two zone. A memo was written by Joe Collins, a code compliance officer stating, on twenty-two twenty-five, twelve twenty-sixty-one, the address referenced above is allowed to continue the storage use in the real lot of the parcel as a pre-existing non-conforming use that was established by the previous hot metal car rental business dated November seventh, nineteen eighty-five. Parking was used for Wagner Auto Business. That was an onsite establishment. It appears the outdoor storage facility is non-compliant with the zone and should not be grandfathered in as acceptable use. According to zoning regulations, section one fifty-eight dash three, fines established. The fine violation should be up to a hundred fifty dollars per day. For each day the violation continues payable to the treasurer of the town of Simsbury. Although there have been fines imposed for violators, there is no mention of fines for Steve Antonio. The Simsbury taxpayers are being fleeced by our representatives. Recently, the Board of Selectmen reviewed a proposal from Town Manager Mark Nelson to establish a food pantry using the Darling Trust for operating expenditures. Town Manager Mark Nelson stated that he negotiated the process with the directors of the Darling Trust. The Darling Trust would pay for a part-time employee and the rental of his room at First Church of Christ for storage distribution. I contacted both Avon and Windsor discussing the funding for their food pantries. All storage facilities were donated and all other process of collection and distribution were free, done by volunteers. It appears the Town Manager Mark Nelson provided the directors of the Darling Fund a proposal that was not fully vetted with a false prime premise that the directors approved on Mark Nelson's misguided proposal. The Board of Selectmen are also at fault if we're not doing their homework on reviewing models from other towns. The Darling Fund is for the neediest individuals in that town. Using the fund for the food pantry that should be done by volunteers takes needed money for more worthy projects. The proposal of the Darling Fund for funding the food pantry should be withdrawn or replaced with a volunteer program with free space at the First Church of Christ. Expenditures for the fleet's comfort dog should be removed from the budget as it was initiated through the offer funds. It appears the purchase of Two Farms Village Road, the special education has not been completed and remains vacant. It was negotiated by Town Manager Mark Nelson.
Thank you, Charles.
Grant of four hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you, Charles.
Per deification of the ground for this property.
Jo- Joan.
Should be withdrawn and paid. Towns do not pay a hundred eighty thousand dollars for the annual.
How should she get to?
Joan, please stop.
Starbucks also has withdrawn its application to Big Y.
Joan, um, Linda, can you come up, please?
And all of my comments we posted on Simsbury's act and Twitter and John Coe.
Thank you.
Should there be a use of music at some point?
Yeah. Linda, come on up.
Wendy has the gavel.
I did use the gavel. It wasn't my gavel though. It's not my initial one.
Thank you.
I have the mouth. She has the gavel.
Um, okay, Linda, you have five minutes. Um, okay, Linda, you have five minutes.
Linda Scofield, three Ryan Circle. I didn't come to talk about this at first, but Joan gave a long list of all of the public service things that Steve Antonio has done, so I just wanna say thank you for your many years of service.
Thank you.
And thank you all for working because you're all volunteers as I was for many years as well. So thank you. You don't get enough credit.
Should I give a speech?
It's funny that I happened to be here on a day when you're talking about Curtis Park because I actually came to talk about the other half of Curtis Park that's close to the river. Um it's it's a, it, you know, a park that is kind of a mess in a lot of ways. Um and people do go there to swim. I go there to swim. I know a lot of people don't swim in the river, I do, it's actually a lovely river. Um people go there to let their dogs go in the water. Uh and uh people put their kayaks in and out of there. So there's a fair amount of traffic, families, et cetera, who who do use that little tiny area of waterfront. I wish it was much bigger. One of these days when we have a budget, we should make it a wit- a riverfront park. Um but over the years, uh poison ivy does grow there. And at in the past, there have been times where I've pointed out that there's a lot of poison ivy and Mary Glassman and Lisa Hebner would do something and make the poison ivy where your park go away. Um I don't know what they did, but they made it go away.
Magic gavel.
So, um, uh, you know, I was there recently, uh quite in all these hot days. And I saw a couple of families, a lot of people don't identify poison ivy, they don't know what it looks like. There were two young families, one on a blanket with, I don't know, six-month-old, four-month-old, six-month-old baby in the middle of the poison ivy. And my heart was breaking for them. I mean, I'm always giving people lessons, this is poison ivy, don't touch it. Now you need to go wash with, you know, certain things you can buy at the pharmacy or dish detergent, something to get the oil off. I'm like thinking about that baby and this young family, they're all gonna be covered with horrible itchy misery for two weeks. Um we need to deal with that poison ivy. I see that when I drive on Riverside Road, both sides of Riverside have stuff that would grow into the road if it wasn't sprayed. And so it is sprayed. I don't know what you spray it with, but it kills it. You need to use that same stuff to kill because actually the poison ivy uh is further away from the water than Riverside Road is. So whatever they're using there should be able to be used at the park so that babies are not suffering with poison ivy. Yeah, so it's not my self-interest because I know what poison ivy is, but it just hurts me to see all these people with little kids running around and potentially being miserable for the next couple of weeks. So can you please deal with the poison ivy? I did send, by the way, a an email to Parks and Recs a couple of weeks ago. I have not had a response. I would appreciate that. So, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Linda. Jeff? Jerry Berg?
Jordan Berg, two-two-five Old Farms Road, I'm here tonight. As Board President for Simsbury Performing Arts Center. I'm not here to complain or anything, so don't worry about it. First thing I wanna do is I wanna talk about this this last weekend. We had a great Talk at Mountain Music Festival on Friday. Five thousand people on the field enjoying themselves. It was a wonderful time. On Sunday, we had a free Afro-Caribbean jazz group. These guys were great. And it was free and open to the public because we got a grant from um Chamber Music of America who paid for their transportation and paid for them to be there. So we just made it free. And it was lovely. We got a very diverse crowd and a wonderful time. This weekend coming up is the music of T. Turner. Cut that out if it qualifies as an ad. Now the the next thing is, I know you guys have something to vote on tonight uh for our organization. And I just wanna say, Mark and his staff, we've been talking about this for a long time now. We've been sometimes butting heads, sometimes shaking hands, sometimes wrestling. We got a million bucks that we've got invested in this thing, so we're very passionate about it. But his staff and they've just been really good in looking out for the interest of the town. They just recently managed to pull a hundred and nine thousand dollars out of the overall cost of it. I mean, that's great stuff. Uh that's the stuff that public-private partnerships are made from. So I'm actually here to say thanks. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thanks.
Thanks for being here. Hey, Ryan.
All right.
Yeah, all right.
All right.
Okay. Mike already used this hat. But I'm really here to just say the same thing that Mike did. Uh please support this expenditure and capital uh project. We've been hosting the Talk at Mountain Music Festival down there for a long time. We've used trailers in the back. Uh other towns would love to steal the Talk at Mountain, Talk at Mountain Music Festival from us. And I think we've got to fund the green room, get rid of those trailers, and fully support the Talk at Mountain Music Festival. It will also give us the opportunity to bring more and bigger events like we have had in the past. Uh Willie Nelson was here twice. Allison Kraus was here twice. You all know that, a lot of these things. But we need to get back to that. And our project included funds for us to focus on bringing in name acts. So that we have a couple more, one before the Talk at Mountain Music Festival and hopefully one afterward. And we need the funds that we're getting in a, that are in our capital project to support that expansion of our of our role down there and bring entertainment to Simsbury. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Uh do we have anybody else here for public audience? Who is, what's your name?
Susan.
Susan Olson.
Olson.
Okay. Okay.
I'm Laura Boyco from fifteen Oakhurst Road. Um bef- before I get into my other thing, I just wanna make a point that I've been to a number of different board and commission meetings and various um members of governing bodies of the town speak in front of other boards and commissions. And it is really important that when they do so, they state if they have a governing position in town. And if so, whether they're speaking as a private citizen or whether they're speaking from that position. Because while many of us that show up week after week know who they are or who you are or who other board and commission members are, not everybody does and we don't know the position from which they're speaking or the point of view that they might have. In addition to that, I wanna go over a couple of things and some of them overlap with Curtis, but they al- al- also overlap with other projects.
That Curtis, not this Curtis.
Um there are permeability issues when we're paving over dirt or gravel lots that are in areas that generally flood. Uh surfaces that are paved over with asphalt do not absorb the water down into the ground like uh gravel or dirt do. Um this is particularly an issue in areas that flood because then it creates more flooding when it doesn't soak into the ground. I wanna point out that the turf at the high school got washed out a while ago and pieces uplifted and all the little granules that come home in my child's cleats all washed out with it. So they had huge insurance issues and had to rebuild. But also whatever was there, if they are near a body of water, easily could have washed into it. Um a number of projects throughout town are talking about public bathrooms. By no means only the one we're talking about tonight. There's been discussions about them at Memorial, there's been discussions about them at the PAC. And what nobody is discussing is when these bathrooms are left open, who's gonna check them and clean them? Are we gonna hire more staff to do that? And if they're all over town, how is that gonna happen? Um I've had some friends in other towns that have public bathrooms or I don't know if you've been in other public bathrooms in places and they can get really nasty. Um and then that becomes a town responsibility for building these every year. I also wanna point out that we focus a whole lot on economic development as people think it pertains to helping with our taxes. But um we focus on economic development and supporting our businesses. But then our town government entities compete directly with the business community. So the library is now running a printing business where they can print banners and playbills in competition with the brand-new trailhead printing business we have and also in competition with Staples, but they undercut them because they're subsidized with our tax dollars. They run free movies, so people don't have to go to Apple Cinemas. They run a knitting group when we have a brand-new knitting in store, knitting store in town that does the exact same thing. They are now on, now running Trivia Night on the exact same night and time as Iron Horse and Redstone Pub. So we're paying our tax dollars. These things use staff and they cost us taxpayer money. And then it undermines the economic development efforts, which also is costing us tax money. So when the town's competing with the town businesses, we have a conflict going on here. And that needs to be addressed. Um one of the interest interests that was mentioned regarding Simsbury Soccer was food and how when, and I know this well, you travel to whatever town and you need to get your kids' food because you're on the go and you're not home. Well, where did I go when my kids were going to Curtis or other towns? I went to Dunkin' Donuts, I went to um a sandwich shop in town, I went to Subway when it was here, whatever it is. I ran in one of the convenience stores. If private clubs are opening food concessions, then we don't have to go to those businesses and we're undermining all the business that they're currently getting when there's soccer going on and sp- other sports. So this competing with the local businesses with government or private um nonprofit entities that are in government agreements is really something we need to start thinking about when we're talking, on the other hand, about economic development. Um and the last thing I wanna say is that it is very concerning to me that we're making all of these deals with the PAC, which pays a minimal amount of money under the guise of economic development, although there were all kinds of announcements I heard at the concert this weekend about cars that were parked in the wrong place, license plates and car types that needed to be to be moved. Some of them were even in our fire department parking lot, I think.
Ten seconds.
And we leased out Simsbury Farm, which has been leased out to basically a private industrial business for a dollar.
Oh, time's up.
So please stop giving away the farm, literally.
I'm Susan Olson.
So, um, I'm in a different time zone here. Uh my name is Sue Olson, um I live at one oh-nine Hot Meadow Street um in Wheaton. Um with my husband, John, I volunteer with um a nonpartisan group called Citizens Climate Lobby. Um we advocate for science-based policy to combat climate change on the state and national level. Um we have as many as two hundred thousand supporters nationally. Um locally, in like District Five, we have about thirty active members and Simsbury about twelve. Um but we're active. Um last spring, we had the privilege of participating in successful Simsbury Sustainability Fair hosted by the library. About nine hundred people attended. At our table, we were conducting a one-question survey developed by the Yale Program on Climate Change Communication. Um I tried to send that out, but this is what it was. We called, oops. It's called the Six Americans Survey. And it's an opportunity for people to self-identify where they are on the spectrum. Um people that chose to identify as alarmed or concerned, we showed them that they were in the majority, which they didn't always realize. I thought that was helpful. Um I like this this survey because it's very non-judgmental. But um when we uh identified people that were concerned or alarmed, we asked if they would be willing to um write their name and their zip code so that we could notify their elected officials that they had this concern. And um we got forty-seven people, like very easily. Um and in that process, we realized there were people that came from Broadbrook and New Britain and East Hartford and Nogatuck to come to our fair. It was pretty interesting. Anyway, there were thirty-six from Simsbury. And um if you want to know, I have them categorized by zip code. I didn't share it with you unless you want to know. Um I guess what I want to say is that I I can say that you have constituents who are concerned about climate change. And they want you to know that and they want you to consider that when you're making your decisions. That's my pitch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for public audience? Okay. Um so the next thing that we do in our meetings, for anyone who's new here, is we move some items to the consent agenda. Um so we're going to do that right now. And then we have a presentation from Mark Massaro of EverSource. Um so I'd like to ask for a motion, um I'm recommending we move item C, D, H, and I to the consent agenda. There's no appointments or anything this afternoon.
Beach is the uh supervisor of that description.
Yeah.
I had just minor comments.
Okay, so so I'll take that out, okay, sure.
If you want me.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any anybody, everybody here wanna make a motion on that?
So moved.
Okay, okay, um what, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Heather, you wanna vote? Card, I keep looking up. Okay, so C, D, and, oh, you're moved to the consent agenda. Uh so now, we have a presentation from EnerSource, Ev- Energy Update by the Community Relations and Economic Development Senior Specialist, Mark Massaro. You have fifteen minutes, tell us your stop.
Be quick because I know you don't wanna stay.
Well, I was just gonna preface, you you had sent an email explaining some rate changes and things like that and I was
Yes.
I'm not gonna explain that, I'm gonna let Mark explain that.
So, thank you. Um what precipitated the request for me to come out and present, um in twenty twenty-four, um our state regulators, working with us and other utilities in state, came up with a di- electric discount rate program. That program was either ten percent or fifty percent discount on the electric supply side of the bill. The initial year of that kind of brought different things to light. And um that wide band of discount rate really was a big number for all pay payers to absorb. So after looking at those numbers, uh it was decided early this year, pretty early this year, to to actually create multiple bands within that discount rate. So anywhere from five to fifteen, twenty, forty, and fifty percent based on household income. So when I sent that information to you, I asked, you know, how do we share this with our residents? And um and I'll go through it really quickly and then we'll have some time for questions at the end. Um but there's also, other than just the discount rate, we've included other programs that are available for uh customers, our customers, your residents, um that are not solely based on on income. They're available to everybody, whether it be a third-party supplier, which we highly encourage. Um EverSource makes no money on the supply part of the bill, that's a straight pass-through. Um and then energy efficiency, right? So if the word that you don't use, the less your bill is gonna be. So um we'll go through these slides here. It's okay.
Share the screen, Heather can see it.
Okay. Here we go. Alright, so so again, we're gonna talk about recent electric rate changes. Um and there's multiple components to that. Um the electric discount rate, uh programs that help, multiple different programs, and then any questions? Um so the recent electric changes, and this is, uh May first is um our annual rate adjustment mechanism. So this is where uh we were, our regulators um will look at various programs. So energy efficiency is part of this. Um you know, the big contracts with the nuclear program, uh the nuclear plants in that were, as a, as a company, EverSource, and also the other utility in the New Haven area, United Illuminating, were required by the state of Connecticut to purchase, block purchase energy um from Millstone in Connecticut and Seabrook Station in New Hampshire. Um to, at the time, to keep them viable, keep them open, keep them running. The predominant fuel for generation in in the northeast and especially in New England is natural gas. The volatility of natural gas is a volatility in electric rates because if they burn gas to create electricity because if they burn gas to create electricity, their costs go up, our rates of supply go up with that. Over the last year, it's actually been a benefit because we actually don't sell, it's kind of odd. We don't sell to the public what we buy from them. We have to actually sell it back to the marketplace at a set rate. And if that rate is a benefit to ratepayers, a credit then comes back to the the Connecticut ratepayers' bill. If we're selling it at a loss, Connecticut ratepayers are absorbing that loss. So, for a period of time, we weren't benefiting from that contract. Last year, we did. So, in this in this number, some of the things that have come off, including that supply uh pricing. On an average, EverSource electric customer is about seven hundred kilowatt-hours a month across the full year. Summer's gonna be obviously different. We're using air conditioning. Some winter months, depending if you're an electric heated customer, the winter months are gonna be more than likely higher than that. But on average, if you balance it out across the year, you're about seven hundred kilowatt-hours uh per month. So, in that average month, you're gonna see thirteen hundred fifty-dollar lower bill than you would have at the same time last year. In June, the electric discount rate kicked in with these multiple tiers. And it's based on income. Folks that qualify for energy assistance, um whether it be for gas, oil, electric, doesn't matter. If they qualify under the federal guidelines for energy assistance, they automatically qualify for that five percent discount. And then staged, there will, there'll be a graph in here in a minute. Staged based on the household size and then there the farther you move away from that uh federal number, away from the the five percent number, you start moving into fifteen, twenty, forty, and fifty. July first is the beginning of what we call their, our summer supply rate. So, that rate, we go out to market and purchase supply price for customers that don't go to the third-party market on their own. There are opportunities to go out and actually save on that part of the bill. You can shop. You can have long-term contract, short-term contract. The one caveat is you really have to follow up and know when that thing is coming to a close. You want to be in place or have a new uh contract in place at that expiration date. The nice thing about what the state um did over the last few years is eliminated the early termination clause or fees. So, you can move from from contract to contract, so come back to EverSource if our prices are are better than what's out in the marketplace at no penalty at any time. So, it it makes it easier to 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 work it. But again, you have to pay attention and you have to really protect yourself because it can go backward on you uh pretty quickly as well. But as of July first, our supply price uh dropped from the first half of the year from just over eleven cents to just a quarter under ten cents per kilowatt-hour. Again, that seven hundred kilowatt-hour uh average customer is gonna see about a ten-dollar-a-month savings. Granted, July, you're rolling into your cooling season, air conditioning. So, you're gonna be using more, you're probably gonna see a higher bill during the summer, even with a lower supply price. Uh because you're using more kilowatt-hours uh during that time period. So, here's the 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 numbers behind the the discount rate. So, to receive the discount rate, household must meet the initial federal income guidelines based on the household size. So, you could see that first five percent um discount column. If anyone would go in and into the senior center, and I know they'll have representatives there to help them apply for energy assistance, whether it be for their oil heating or natural gas, electric. Soon as they qualify based on the the familial uh household income uh number, they can then qualify automatically for that five percent discount. After they meet the the income guideline, that would be that. Or if any member, at least one member in the household, um gets a public assistance benefit. There's a list on our website. It would clutter, we would have probably five slides up here of just how they would qualify. You can go to our website and look at all those individual uh programs that would automatically qualify them and have a financial hardship status added to the account for the winter protection. That would take care of that. And then, you know, we encourage that, you know, folks to visit their local community action agency. CRT is one in Hartford. The applications, I believe, through Simsbury Social Services go through CRT and then they work with us to get everything applied to uh customers' accounts, get their protection in place and hold that account uh for when the federal energy assistance comes in and gets it applied to their bill. Whether if if it were electric heating, uh if they're getting assistance for electricity, it would be on the EverSource electric bill. If it were gas, I would assume it's gonna be on their Connecticut natural gas bill. And then if it's an oil supplier, I'm sure that they work directly with the uh the oil companies that they that they work with. The discount rate, if if you're already receiving a discount on your bill, your your income or benefit information is gonna need to be updated on an annual basis. Generally, if you're applying for energy assistance, that's gonna help you do that. But if you're not doing that, some folks will not go out and apply for energy assistance, but they still qualify based on their income. So, we encourage them to stay in contact with us, reach out to our customer care group, um and and make sure that that is being applied appropriately. If you're working uh through uh Connecticut Department of Social Services, they in general will certify you, the the our customer, uh on behalf of the customer directly to us. So, we will get a list of of uh names and addresses. And we will then, you know, apply the appropriate discount based on their benefit uh level in within our system and they will see that. And again, this little note, uh line at the bottom says, discount applies to a limited amount of electricity. What that means is an electric uh electrically heated residence, they will, the discount will apply for the first twelve hundred kilowatt-hours per month. Anything above that is the standard rate. If you're a non-electrically heated customer, it's eight hundred kilowatt-hour um cap. Anything above eight hundred yeah will not be discounted up and on the uh on on their monthly bill. There'd be very few shoulder months that that would be the case in general for the average user. But there are also other programs available, uh and we'll get to that in a minute, besides the discount rate.
Mark, I have a quick question about the DSS. If if, does that apply if there's a person in your household um uh under DSS? Or does it have to be the head of household?
No. Uh one member of the household require, would, any benefit would qualify them. To what percentage? I think it's debate, it's based on the income of the household, but whole house.
Great. Yeah, I just want to clarify.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And at any point, there's any questions, if the public has questions. I am far from the expert on this. And it and it's really kind of picking up pace because it's fairly new. But our customer care representatives are always available for the phone call. There's a ton of information on our website. They can call, read it. If they need more information, representatives available to walk them through the whole process. Again, Connecticut Energy Assistance Program, income eligible, and we talked about that first column. The income eligible will be qualified for up to five hundred thirty dollars of federal energy assistance or fuel assistance. I should not call it an energy. I tend to do that. But uh fuel assistance that cover winter heating costs. Again, whatever fuel type is their heating source, that's what it'd be applied to. Operation Fuel is available to customers in need of emergency energy and utility assistance. And that's their website there and you can lock, you know, they can log into that website and get more information for an operation fuel. And I believe they're changing, the the name of Operation Fuel is changing. They're still kind of do programs as Operation Fuel, but the the overall parent name is in the process of changing. Uh that QR code will work. So, uh you have that the slide that they want to scan the QR code. You can go right, it'll take you to our website and they'll have more information about the uh these the energy uh assistance programs. And then payment plans. Now, payment plans are available for for, you know, different um hardship level customers, uh financial hardship. Budget billing is also available. I I use regular budget billing at home. I'd use a ton more electricity in the summer. So, I I use the reg- regular budget billing. It kind of flattens out my bill across the year. It will make adjustments on a on a, I believe, on a four-month basis to the uh to the equal payment plan. But you know what, basically what your bill is going to be a month in advance. So, you you can work towards like a normal budget that you would have for any type of payment. The matching payment program is also a forgiveness program. I kind of flipped around here a little bit. The matching payment program is basically a forgiveness program. So, if you were to say you had twelve hundred dollars in arrears and you just can't catch up, you can't catch up, qualify for the matching payment program. It's a twelve-month program. They will take those twelve months and as long as you pay your monthly payment, your budgeted monthly payment every month for twelve months, they'll deduct a hundred dollars every month you make that payment. And it'll be forgiven off the bill. So, at the end of that twelve-month cycle, you're back to your current monthly payment. Hopefully, you can uh qualify for any programs you're still available for, eligible for. But um uh they can they can do those things. If they don't qualify for the matching payment program, there's still flexible payment programs out there. In years past, a payment plan was two or three months. We've extended that window and really, I would say, since twenty twenty, we've extended it up to eighteen months if required. You know, if it's really, they can't manage that, we can go up to that eighteen months and and help customers that wouldn't qualify for the matching payment program based on income. We know that people have an income, but they're, everybody's extended. And just because you have an income above that federal number doesn't mean you're you're dancing through the the flowers of cash. So, um you know, just, you know, have people, the call comes into Mark's office.
Yeah, can you, I was gonna ask you, is this something we could send out or put out on the website? Because we're, I, we just need, we're past fifteen minutes and um a a a presentation, so we kind of, we could wrap it up.
It is. Yep, very quickly. I'll go quickly. Energize CT is a plug for programs. You can find supply rate there. The supply uh side of the bill, you can get your own contract. Home Energy Solutions, I'm gonna throw this plug out there because Home Energy Solutions is an audit. Home Energy Audit. In the past, it was seventy-five dollars. For the next two months, it's gonna be zero cost. So, encourage folks to call uh that that number at the bottom of the page. Call, get it scheduled, and as long as it's completed by October thirty-first, it will be zero fee. That program's basically about a thousand dollars worth of work, but you're gonna get it at no cost. And then they'll be able to get additional rebates and incentive information for additional energy efficiency information. That's it. I do have some, um I could leave them out where the brochures are up front.
Sure, that'd be great.
The information on the the electric discount rate for anybody that comes in and wants to grab one, I could always drop more off.
Okay.
But if you have any questions, I'm
Okay, thanks, Mark.
Did you drop that information off to Social Services in the senior center by any chance?
I didn't, but they usually get it through CRT. I could always break them by.
I can get it to you.
Thank you.
Drop these off. Also, Operation Fuel here and the Greystone Foundation do um support for those in need. Greystone specifically for adjusting bills and and all that. I think if uh we could communicate with them or I could link us up, uh yes, this is good information. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mark.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, we're gonna move on. I'm gonna do a quick first elections report. Hopefully, we'll give us quick reports tonight. I just want to say that these are long meetings because we've been meeting once a month. The other thing I wanted to just clarify, we we have supported the PAC, we approved the funding. We really are here to talk about the contract um with the, you know, who's going to do the work and stuff like that. That's why we're here tonight and have it on the agenda. Um and a couple other things, the poison IV issue, we've, I have forwarded that to Mark and Tom. The mi- the minutes, uh maybe something that we'll bring back to the board to discuss because we've been talk, it's in the past, it's come up with, on the board with Heather and I. Do we want our minutes to just show yes or no votes or do we want them to be more expansive? Um and that we could potentially talk about that at the board level to see what people prefer. Um July fourth concert was fabulous. The fireworks were great. It was a full house. It was just a really fun night. There's a Vietnam and Korean Veterans Event coming on August eighteenth at four P M at Henry James Middle School. It's our Lieutenant Governor, I'm Susan Weissowitz, and the Veterans Affairs Commission, Ron Welch. Have been doing this at multiple communities around the state. They've visited many towns. They've been asking us to do it, so we're finally going to do it. I'm working with VFW, American Legion, and DAR, the town, and others to set that up. Um and that's it. The rest you can read in my report because it will go out in the next couple of days and I don't have to bore everybody with that. I'm gonna turn it over to Mark.
Thanks, Town Chair. I'm gonna defer my uh Town Manager Report. We'll put it up online and circulate it in the normal channels. I know we've got a full agenda. I just want to take a point of personal privilege and thank all the town staff that have been working so hard over the last few months. We've been really engaged in a number of things, from collective bargaining to memorandums of of understanding, to license agreements to and some of our staff have had some wonderful time off for summer vacations. That's making it busier for those of us that haven't. I just want to thank the board for all its support and our partners across the organization at the Boards of Education and the Boards of Finance and most of all, the public for coming. These meetings have gotten long, not just because in the summer they meet once a month, but because the staff at the staff level have been really busy. And all you have to do is go back on our website through the Board of Selectment Agendas and look at them for the last year and a half since I've been your Town Manager. And you can see that we're not wasting any time bringing some things forward, uh even if they are a little controversial, right? You're starting to see a few three-three votes, a few four-two votes. Uh and you know, from my perspective as a longtime public servant, uh we're doing at the staff level what we should. We're bringing issues forward to this board for their uh determination. They are the policymakers. Uh and we try to give them the best resources and information that we can. And I depend on a huge stat, pretty big stat, I will admit, of experts that help us do this. So, thank you, Chair.
Sure. Um okay, so selectmen liaison and committee reports, and I'm gonna give you a stare if you're going too long.
Yeah. I'll be, I'll be quick.
Be quick.
Uh the Police Commission was canceled today, so there's no Police Commission.
Okay, good.
Uh zoning, um someone had mentioned that um Starbucks has not um signed a lease to to move into wagon property, but that supposedly has.
Okay.
So, um I'm
Okay, let me jump to Heather. Do you have anything you want to report, Heather?
Uh yes, I have a few things from Public Safety.
Okay.
Um we met in June and um due to um an uptake in opioid overdoses, social services and Farmington Valley Health Department are working to coordinate Narcan training. And also, um the police department will have uh fentanyl testing kits to anyone uh twenty-four seven, no questions asked, while supplies last. Uh we also put out our Public Safety Newsletter. Um and for the first time, we have hard copies around um in different locations in town. Different businesses, coffee shops, things like that, so people can find them there in the senior center. The ambulance, um they had their meeting last week. And I mean, they started to process, um the process to purchase a new ambulance, so they're getting quotes for that. Um also, their June call volume, they had a hundred and forty-two transports, which was down one sixty-one the month prior. Um they had eighteen calls for mutual aid in and twenty out. And they're actually um still working on their fund drive, but that's going well for them this year.
Great, thank you.
And that's all.
Okay. Steve?
That's the number four.
Love it. Diana?
Okay, uh Board of Directors, there's no meetings for the summer, but the only thing to report is that they were looking at the new principal search for Central School and finalists have been identified for Culture Parks and Recs. There was a wonderful ice cream social that was well-attended and the community band concerts are ongoing. But please check out the Culture and Park uh Parks and Recs website for tons of summer uh fun events that are happening. SIMPAC, as mentioned, three concerts have been very well-attended so far, seventy-five hundred plus at the Fourth of July concert. And their twentieth anniversary concert is upcoming on August ninth. So, please visit the SIMPAC website to find out uh and get tickets for that very exciting event for their twentieth anniversary. Aging and Disability, the traffic stop event was well attended with positive feedback, and it was actually the highest attended event to date for uh for the organization um that has done this. Um, the A A R P grant that we received, we did have a kickoff meeting and found out that there were thirty-five hundred applications, and we are one of thirty that were approved amongst twenty-seven states. And this Saturday is the Disability Picnic uh from Se- uh from, that's uh July nineteenth, from six to eight P M at First Church and all the Board of Selectmen and uh public who have uh members uh who are who are disabled or have family members with disabilities are more than welcome to come to this free event. Uh, Fair Rent, um, they were invited to the Fair Rent Commissions and Actions Conference on seven twenty-four, and I believe we have uh some members going, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Kevin?
I was out for a couple of weeks, so I apologize, and I have too much to report. I'll mention the Sustainability Committee is continuing to work on its um uh sustainability plan, and so it will present uh some of those findings here to this board. I do have a, you know, process consideration for us, whether or not it's something we accept or something that we adopt or approve. Um, so that'll be for our uh consideration there. But I like the emphasis that um focuses on both goal setting, but education for the public, and then coordination with uh public buildings from a cost savings perspective. There's probably some work that we could do that spends earlier now, but uh saves us money in the long run. It probably is the right thing to do from a sustainability perspective as well. So I look forward to the board's uh consideration of that when it gets presented by uh that committee. That's all for me.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, so we're moving into selectman action. Um, the first item that we have is to support the Aging and Disability Commission Age Friendly Community Action Plan. We have Jan Beatty here, who's the Chair of um Aging and Disability, and Ed Lamontagne is here. Um, tonight, we received this last month, we reviewed it, and tonight we're being asked to approve the plan um so that you can move forward as an age-friendly community. I will give you a quick opportunity. If you'd like to give us just an overview of anything you want to highlight on this, um, quick, I just could.
Quick.
Because you're.
I just wanna tell the board, the packets that were left here on the desk, this first cover letter that says Action Plan is not regarding the age-friendly community. This is the action plan for the commission.
Okay.
So this is not what we will be discussing.
Yeah, so we, I looked at the goals that were outlined here, right? Um, and so, so so basically, do do you wanna say something?
Yes. Yeah.
Um, I did do a little PowerPoint. I don't know if you have that. Uh, Tom, do you even have that?
It's in the packet, yep.
It's it's in the, do you have it there?
Uh.
We I don't know if we were planning to go through it or not, but um.
But I mean, it's it's nine nine minutes. I'm light, we can do the lightning round version.
Yeah, why don't you give us just the overview um of of the plan and your goals for our board to approve the plan?
Okay. The 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 elevator speech, not the lightning round, but the elevator speech.
The elevator, yes.
Um, what, do you want me to just from here?
You could good consent, you could get up, whatever, it's comfortable.
Sure.
Okay. I I'm happy here. We have the age-friendly community. Uh, I am the Chair of the Subcommittee uh of the Aging and Disability Commission. And we have been working on this age-friendly community since two thousand and nineteen. That is when we joined uh A A R P's initiative. There are now nine hundred and ninety-five communities across the country. Thirty-eight percent of the population is now age-friendly. Um, so we are, part of our prospect in doing this is to create an action plan over three years' time. So it's from twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven. The action plan that you have in front of you uh that we prepared for A A R P is about twenty-seven pages long. And within that is about five pages of an action plan that reflects all of our comments that we've received from surveys that were done among Simsbury residents and the focus groups that we held with them. So there are four domains of livability. You will see actions that we have suggested there for those four domains of livability. Um, we have community partners that we went out to. There is a list again on that uh PowerPoint, a list of all of our community partners that we submitted this action plan to. They all commented on it, and they have approved what they saw. And now we are asking you to support that plan so that we can send it to A A R P and finalize our commitment for that uh age-friendly community.
I think I speak.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, I I was um the liaison on my first term to Aging and Disability, I think when this all
So you remember this, yeah.
when this all started.
Well, shout out to Diana because Diana has been with it for a long time.
Yeah, yeah.
Former Chair.
Yeah, you were the Chair, I think, when I was on there.
Yeah. Yep.
Um, so I don't know if anybody has specific comments about some of the items here. Uh, my only comment was um as will you guys be implementing these and moving them forwards? You know, a- as your body and either bringing them to us if needed? And then anything that requires any sort of financial support or anything like that obviously would have to come in time to be discussed as part of our budget decisions.
Absolutely.
Um, I'm just gonna open it up to anybody on the board who wants to ask any questions on on any of this before we move forward with it. Anybody down there?
In the first goal and and actions, one point one and one point two, um, it talks about the property tax abatements to owners of rental properties in addition to older residents. I wasn't sure exactly how that how that's split. So it's property tax abatements to older residents and just property tax abatements to owners of rental properties is how I think that's in how I read it. Just wanted to make sure I understood that. And then the financial incentives for income limited A D Us. I I um, you know, I have concerns about A D Us in particular referencing that here as as a means of um, you know, setting policy here if we set it in a goal. But insofar as finding affordable, you know, income sensitized, you know, property or rentals and and all that, I think is absolutely appropriate for consideration. But insofar as setting A D Us in in a goal, um, you know, I have concerns about. So those are my two reactions overall. I I like the the report. It's well thought out and well researched and appreciate the contribution from the committee.
The one thing I can tell you, um, and and this may be where language clarification is needed, especially regarding one point two with the A D Us, is that the lens that this was written on was through the lens of seniors and potential seniors with disabilities, rather than uh where I understand from a zoning point
Right.
of view, an A D U can be built for any purposes. It's not restricted to those. But um, so that's where potentially, and I don't know if that would change uh opinion or uh, but that clarification may be needed within the language.
Sure. It it um, so I would I would say, you know, accessible housing or something as opposed to the the A D U in particular. It unfortunately, I think it ends up being a lightning rod, and it does conjure up other, you know, images for me. And then once the A D U is 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 there, then it then it remains there. So, those are my comments.
Yeah. I just wanna point out that the metrics here, we are an advisory commission.
Hmm.
So you'll notice that the metrics are there because A A R P has asked us to do metrics. And you'll notice that it's always when proposed.
Yep.
So we're providing support. So we will, you know, obviously, we don't have any uh ability to affect that. But when it's proposed, that's what we will support.
Thank you. And and that would be my only concern if we, you know, approve or adopt this, that that lends a policy setting, you know, standpoint here that that may be intended or may not be intended. It wouldn't be my intent uh to set a precedent for establishing A D Us as a as a right.
Uh, I I had a comment. I'm just gonna throw mine out, unless Heather, I don't wanna forget Heather. Do you have any comments, Heather, just well, before I forget that you're there?
Um, no, I mean, I I just wanna say I uh appreciate all the work that was done on this. Um, and I don't have any questions, though.
Okay.
Thanks, Heather.
I I just had a couple just things related to the housing items. Are some of these overlap with some of the items in the SHIP PAC that we did, because we did have a member from from right here. And um I did wanna acknowledge that earlier, I think it was last year, we made an adjustment to the to the tax um credit for elderly. We bumped up the income limit, so we have done something. If that's in here, we can check that off the list.
Yep.
Um, would be one thing that I would say. But other than that, you know, it it's really well thought out, and hopefully some of these items can come to fruition um with good planning and if needed, little, you know, kind of things. And we do know the accessible parking has, that came up recently. There's issues around that that will be addressed. Um, but with that, um, I'm gonna ask for motion effective July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five to accept receipt of the Aging and Disability Commission Age Friendly Community Subcommittee's Age Friendly Community Action Plan for twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-seven as presented, and further move to support the action plan to assist in finalizing Simsbury's status as an age-friendly community.
Some of.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion?
Just to clarify, that we're accepting the receipt, we're not approving the the plan or any of that, and then it's going to support the age-friendly community status. I I agree with that.
Yeah, okay. And it funding, again, we've said is another tier.
Yeah.
Um, so with that, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that's um passing unanimously. Okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming. Um, sorry to people who have to wait for their attend item. So the next item is to um, so th- this item came to us, we put it on the agenda so we could push the the draft um M O U out there. But there there are a lot of questions and there are some considerations. Um, I am gonna ask to table this for tonight, but I would like to get some questions out on the table um for Mark and um Ben and our attorneys to review. And also, I know Melissa Appleby, our Budget Director, is looking into the insurance issues. Um, so so if I'd like to, I've asked questions, I've, they've been dispersed to the board um responses, but I would like to open it up to others who might have some questions. We're really excited to hear what the soccer club's doing. Um, we understand that it is, you know, right now, the twenty-year commitment, um with the promise of doing some investment into the to the soccer area. Um, we just need to do what's best for both the town and for for the people of the town and for the Simsbury Soccer Club. And I think that's what we wanna try to do, to get the strongest M O U that we can get, um, you know, so that it's pretty tight and we all know what both sides are doing and and agreeing to, you know, for a long term. Um, so that's the reason that there's questions and and items to kind of tighten up in it. We're still waiting for the town attorney to review it and finalize that along with the insurance cons- considerations. So um I would like to open it for questions, um and then I can add mine, but I'm gonna start. Heather, do you have questions while you're up there, or do you wanna wait, or you wanna listen?
Um, I have a couple, well, I have a few questions actually, but um, one, uh, if this great agreement is put into place, the soccer test to the other fields and competing with the other sports that are outside of Curtis Park, how will that work? I don't know how much um soccer utilizing the other fields as well, and I just didn't know um there was anything with that. Um, I also had questions just about replacement. I think turf's fields need to be replaced every ten to twelve years. Um, so I was curious about that and the M O U and how we're looking for uh at that. And then, um, I just also was, am curious, um, just how the funding was um decided upon. With the, are are the um, not funding, the twenty-five hundred dollars moving to five thousand dollars? And and how that was sort of, uh, how did those numbers come about, how did it agree?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a general question. I um, do I do other people have that question? I would think we all might have that question.
If you wanted to save them up and and go through all of them, and I'll I'll do a a quick presentation, then we can get Tom up here as well, so.
Okay.
That's reasonable.
Yeah, probably be better.
Sure.
Sure. So that will, um, okay, Kevin?
Uh, exclusive use, uh, you know, came up, and that's probably just a term of art here. I I can see a reasonable use of the word exclusive use, use except for, you know, what's listed in in item C. But maybe if there is a term that we could use that's primary use or preferential use or whatever that is that um that makes it acceptable to all. Overall, I I understand uh the the intent here is that we we are granting a right of exclusive use because there's gonna be a significant capital investment on improvements in that area. So longer term to, you know, validate and make that reasonable. And then the time of year, they wanna be able to actually use it. If they have exclusive use, it has to be the years or the months that they're gonna actually be able to be able to play. Um, but then it is also, you know, town land. So I don't know, um, I how it's written here is is um is acceptable to me, but I I do think that that's something that we'll we'll not um get down to. I I don't necessarily have a concern on the the dollar amount. We we talked through that a lot. From my perspective, it's currently being used as as soccer fields, you know, for the for the public. Um, and it's just a question of um what kind of improvements do we wanna see there on those soccer fields? And who has roles and responsibilities here, the M O U here, as I I hopefully gonna articulate that. Um, I also, uh, as I read it, understand that there's um no ability for the, um, I'm just gonna say soccer club to assign uh this to another organization, either becoming a larger organization or smaller. But one thing that I read in here and just, um, you know, existed in the in the back of my mind is if the soccer club grew larger or increased its scope, um, you know, outside of just this area and became less local or became part of a larger organization and again was less local or something else. I would um like to entertain or just understand how, either in the bylaws for the soccer club that's addressed already, um, or for us so that we know that it's a a partner that we're engaging with that remains a locally run and and for the benefit of the uh people in this town. That's all for me.
That's a good point. You getting getting all this?
I am, I'm good.
Yeah. Um, I do think that the point brought up about, um, have we discussed the public safety issues and the traffic issues with our public safety? Um, permission, which I know it's not been brought before, public safety, but with the town police, with um, you know, first responders. And and I think that is an important part that it needs to be addressed, maybe as part of the insurance piece. But I also think that they should be part of a conversation just to make sure we understand would if you're talking um increased in in uh not only usage, but participants that may be there if you're looking at large tournaments. You know, we we need to have something surrounding, just like we do at the PAC, when they have the large events, um, how is that gonna be managed? Um, and and at what cost? Because we have shared costs with SimPAC. If you look at those two agreements, um, you know, we have costs that uh are are attended for when uh there are some large concerts, whether it's the garbage, whether it's the police. All of that should be taken into account for this M O U as well. Um, and for that, to Kevin's point, that exclusive use, if it's going to be outside of the usage time period, what type of uh usage can be done on the fields? Um, I mean, not, people aren't going out to to buy soccer in the middle of the snow. However, is it something that they're looking to, you know, somebody's walking across it and and, you know, we don't want people find or trouble or they'll get cordon up. I just don't know. I'm not saying that's what you're doing, but um, you know, I I just, we have exclusive use uh for the meadows uh during certain um their season. And outside of that, then it's, you know, back to town, town best use practice.
Yeah.
Uh, Ben, since you're sitting here.
Yes.
When you have a major tournament there, are there, just generally, I mean, I live out there, I go
Right.
Do you, are there traffic issues out there, just?
I mean, so this part, I mean, we're obviously not proposing any particular modification of the field based for what we're asking for, which is the memory.
You're not having the world cup there next year.
But but when we have, we we do host the state championships there.
Yeah.
And so there would never be more people there down the road than there are now for that.
Okay. Currently.
And there aren't issues. We're able to.
Okay.
But one of the things that, you know, if we were to get to the plan that we're proposing, is improve traffic flow. I mean, it would be getting better. It's taking circulating traffic to the back of the park as opposed to keeping it in the front.
Okay.
It's designed actually to improve that, even though, and I know this is a tricky thing, right? Cause what we're really talking about is just the M O U and the license agreement, right? That's what's, I know in front of you, so I don't wanna bleed into the rest of it. But the plan that we envision is actually improving it and making it better, taking cars out of that. So that, it's designed to do that. But we we, even when we have our biggest event there, we're still able to, it still accommodates it, and there's not traffic issues.
So, but leading into this, I'm gonna say this, it would be good to have some sort of, not an addendum, but some sort of schedule that says when this happens, there needs to be a review of with public safety as to what plans you're doing, what, how the P D's gonna to, uh, as part of the, the, just to include that as a potential condition, just putting it out there um if it is a concern of other people.
When you have large tournaments, are you notifying the police as it is now for, you know, potential large?
We're not. I mean, it it
Okay.
We we, in the twenty years I've been involved, we've had one phone call when someone, uh, when a couple people parked along three fifteen, which, you know, from out of town. And we have, I we haven't had that problem since. So I I did have that phone call once, we talked about it, and it's been addressed.
Okay. Do you wanna throw?
Is it me?
Yeah, you could throw something out there.
Okay. Um, so doing, you know, most of my experiences, commercial leases and such, twenty years is a a long time to not have some benchmark, benchmark's the wrong word, but thresholds. Um, in the commercial industry, a typical lease is five years with two options of five years. What you're able to do with that sort of approach is you're able to escalate your base cost. The twenty-five hundred dollars uh in today's day and age is something, you know, it's not chump change. But twenty years ago, twenty-five hundred dollars was a lot more money than it is today. So to not escalate, I'm not saying we want to make money off this. That's not my implication, don't misconstrue it. But twenty-five hundred dollars in twenty years is just, it it's easier to comprehend what I'm trying to say if you go backwards. What was twenty-five hundred dollars worth twenty years? So I think there doesn't need to be some thresholds where the option can continue because we want to incentivize them to to invest in this property, at least that's my perspective at this juncture. Um, but we also wanna make sure that we are covering some of our costs. Uh, one of the things I was a little confused on was the line machine, cause Tom needs a new new line machine, so you don't have to wait to ask. He needs that. Do we own that, Tom?
We will. We own it now, and.
We will. We own it now and we in the last, in this current year budget, there is an appropriation for a line machine that we'll use.
And we use that at at Curtis as well, don't we?
We we will. We the lining machine we have now, we currently use. We will be re- we we will be purchasing a robot liner that we talked about.
Yeah.
We've already done a demo. We're doing another one Wednesday morning if you wanna see it. The um so that will be used at Curtis, but it will use be used otherwise. I think it's what's gotten lost here is Curtis, uh the soccer club, Little League, everybody, they all pay a per player, per season fee. So it's, you know, for their eight hundred some odd players that played this past spring, they cut the they cut the town a check for ten dollars times that eight hundred players. We receive that, that goes towards the maintenance, you know, some maintenance that the taxpayers don't cover for that park. Same thing with Little League, same thing with youth football, same thing with lacrosse. That fee will be increasing to twenty dollars in calendar year twenty six per player. That's outside of this license fee. What the license fee is, is basically a privilege to get that exclusivity and it does escalate as they make the improvements.
I I was gonna, I was gonna say, yeah, sure.
If I could emphasize, it's that increase of fee that that that's what you're gonna hear from me when I get my five minutes on 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 the revenue,
Yeah, no, I know.
which obviously isn't in the MOU because it's separate as a budgeted revenue item. When was that fee last increased?
It was set in two thousand sixteen. It has not moved since two thousand sixteen.
Relative to our peers, uh we're we're low, so we can talk about that.
Yeah, cause we said maybe we refer to it just so there it's acknowledged that you it's not just the twenty five.
Yeah, I just didn't want the board to think it was just that twenty five.
And 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 I I'll make it clear again, soc- soc- the soccer club is the largest payer into that pool of maintenance funds that we get from these sport leagues. They're they they more than double what any of the other leagues have enrollment wise. So I'll just put that, I'll put that out there. They it's just not the li- the license fee is not, you know, the entire package, what the town gets from them. It's more of a privilege for that. Like so you guys having the discussion, what the value of that privilege is for the exclusivity and and it should be kind of pointed for the last fifty years, we're just codifying what's been going on over there for fifty years. We haven't had baseball or football or lacrosse. Those fields were built for soccer and they maintain, they've been soccer fields fifty years. It's not, this isn't anything new. It's just actually we're codifying that MOU that, hey, you know, they're gonna put some, they're gonna put another capital campaign together to put money into that field. You know, I think the expectation, my opinion, their expectation that they wanna, you know, you we can debate the term of the lease. If they're gonna raise six to eight million dollars to do improvements over there, I I think it's it's a reasonable expectation that they should have, you know, have priority use, exclusive use, whatever you wanna call it. That's how we got to the point where we are today with the MOU.
Well, could I just sit here and talk about that?
Absolutely.
Will we have, um I know you guys gave us the plan like um at the last meeting, will we have a schedule kind of of what improvements are planned and when with a timeline, so we know what's coming, you know, what's going to be approved at floodlands or things like that, I mean.
Yeah. I mean, it's gonna depend, I I I don't wanna speak out of term, Ben, but it's it's part of their, they they've in their plan, they have a phased in approach. It's gonna depend on how quick their fundraising goes, so it's hard to put, you know, saying in two thousand twenty seven, you know, they're gonna have enough to do phase ones and phase one and two. I that's all gonna depend on how how their plan goes.
That's the that's the short answer to all of this, to why we're here. I we wanna do it. I would, if I had if I had six million dollars, I would do it tomorrow. But this is step one in order, I have a donor that's re- that's already committed a half a million dollars, but I I I can't even.
Mike, is that you? No, okay.
But right, I need to, they need to know what they're donating it for, right? And so that's part part, that's why this is step one, cause I can then make that promise that that we're gonna do, you know, do what we need to do.
Okay.
I understand.
I got a couple other minute things. Uh ten is reserved for repairs.
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure. Yeah.
But I don't understand with no further explanation, is this the repairs of your capital improvement you're putting in? And is there a warranty on that? I know it sounds silly.
No, I asked a question.
Oh.
I had that on my list.
Oh, it's a good question now.
Well, it just says reserved and it it doesn't say anything about repairs to the i- if they're turf fields, if there's equipment issues, like.
It's a quick easy one. We were just holding that a- as a placeholder for the legal review.
Okay.
Because we had heard, you know, I sent an early draft of this to the town attorney. Uh obviously, again, you know, help helping get feedback as we were working through it. And uh the suggestion was wholesome wholesome placeholders through it for future use is concerned with who's repairing what uh and when type of thing. So I've got some remarks from the town attorney. He's still reviewing it. I expect to get some feedback from um Melissa up in uh insurance, cause Karma's still looking at it, so that's why you're seeing.
So it's not really future, it's it's just a placeholder for future identification, like before we have a
Before you approve the final, that'd be, yeah, that'll be.
Right.
Okay.
It's more information to come.
Yeah.
So the repairs, the insurance, um then since we're just, but I know you have more questions.
I just have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Steve.
Go ahead, Steve.
Naming rights. Are there any naming rights being requested just to put them out?
No. No.
Just a clear black and white? No.
No.
Okay, like I said, I was just asking.
Okay.
Ben's like, Ken.
Oh, Ben, Ben.
I'm just like, yeah, you gotta have the
Victor Jacksons, Antonio's skirts.
Antonio's.
He just don't
Well, but to to, I mean, to answer that question, we're looking to fundraise in all ways. Someone had asked a question about signage. If we had signage and we've done it in the past at Curtis, there's no surprise there. It would face in, not out, so it wouldn't be an issue to point out to three fifteen. If we had did signage and like Memorial does for baseball or whatever, it would face into the fields. It wouldn't face out to the highway.
But that should not probably be ran in here too.
We should articulate that.
Maybe. I would just say that, you know, and and others could correct me, but we we leave some of these things to the land use boards. So you know, just all of that, you know, the the permits that they have to go through, our land use boards can handle that. We we're again just here to to get comment and feedback on the draft MOU so we can wrap it up and get a a clean draft that that hopefully the board could vote on uh in August. And and we do have, I think, uh twelve good comments from the public and now nine from you guys. Anything else, Stephen, and then I'll try to go through.
No, I'm done. I'm still here.
Yeah, yes.
Sorry, my bad, my bad.
Come on, Curtis for Curtis Field.
Um so as the people here, I I grew up playing soccer on those fields over there in Curtis Field too.
Did you pay for those naming rights, Curtis?
Yes, that's what I mean, that's right, yeah. Um so I did a question about the the exclusive, because I I know that currently um it is basically exclusive. It's just soccer. Um so I'm not sure that necessarily, I know it helps you move forward with the um making um improvements to the property, but in in fact, it's already exclusive. Um just looking at the types of advertisements, just to be sure if it's facing inwards, so just is there any or review or some type of review as to what type of advertisements we put there? Um can we look at other other locations as possibilities, just because this is gonna face a lot of issues with with um zoning and the floodplain, all the things we heard today, um if there's possibilities of looking at other locations. Uh let's see, um could the high school use a field? So if something went wrong with the high school field, could they then use that, use that field as a backup? Um then I also had um I I I kinda feel as we're kinda putting the, in my opinion, the cart a little bit before the horse. Um I think we should look at whether this is actually feasible before we sign an MOU for this property first, because we've spent a lot of effort as far as getting this stuff together and it may not even have a chance to go through. So other projects we usually go through, like this um Sim- SimPAC, we go through, we do the floodplain, look at everything, make sure it can actually go through. And then we come up with a memorandum of understanding. This one, we're doing a memorandum of understanding before, even know if it's possible. So I just, that's what I would say. Doesn't matter.
Interesting. Is the turf fields, like, is that a it a must have or or is that still, because that's a a little controversial, I think, right, in some respects?
No- nothing's a must have, right?
Right.
I mean, the reason why turf is popular and has been for forty years is because it's durable. And one of the problems that we have out at Curtis is that it's, the fields have deteriorated because they are grass and because they're being used far more than they were intended to be used. We're bigger now. We have a thousand kids. It's a lot of kids. And to the point someone else made previously, it used to be we were at seven different locations around town and now we're at three-ish. And so there's a lot more people. That those fields were designed only for games on the weekends originally, and now they're being used seven days a week, all fall, seven days a week, all spring. They're just taking the beating. Um the high school does use Curtis on occasionally, cur- now, as overflow, they call and we schedule around them when JV practices there sometimes. Um because uh over a multitude of reasons, um they post sessions there. They if they have a grass game against an opponent, they like to practice on the grass to practice sometime. Um we we work with the high school. They have camp there. There's a lot that happens there and it's just more use. Those are the bigger kids. They that deteriorates the field even further candidly because they're not seven years old, they're seventeen.
Would this exclude that? Are you still allowed in high school?
If it was a turf field, it's a heck of a lot easier, frankly, to work with the high school, because then we're not worried about beating it up in the same way. And so we have a great relationship with them. We do plenty of events. If you know, at three o'clock in the afternoon, when school gets out, there's no one from Simsbury Soccer Club is out there. All of our kids are still in school and the high school comes and uses it. I mean, it's been a pretty good relationship with that reason.
I think that's some of the concern when you when you're talking exclusivity, it makes it sound like town, which is the schools, would no longer have the availability to use that town space. So, you know, if that could be written in potentially, then
I think it, I think it, I think it can be.
That that could be a good.
I'm gonna let you talk in a minute, but I do have a question, cause Adam's here. Um I was, I went back to read the master plan and it said, well, Adam, you're here waiting, activate this plan that your engineering firm, um has our engineering department seen that? And should they see that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Have have you, so you guys have reviewed it?
We've seen uh the master plan. That was, I think, Senate's packet kind of thrown out there zoning.
Back in November, I think.
Back in November.
On it, yeah.
Okay.
We've seen that. And we certainly would see it through the zoning process now.
Just wanna make sure. Um yeah, I I was gonna say, I have a, well, I I did ask a bunch of questions. Mark and Tommy answers them. Um they went out to the board, things to little tweaks and and questions. And the biggest questions uh to me are the maintenance schedule, how much, you know, what do we maintain today? What would the maintenance costs be once this is like full fledged, you know, a really great facility to Tom's department? Um the insurance, you know, is explained that the Simsbury Soccer Club will be the insurers of the property injuries and damage and things like that. Um that was one of my concerns. I do have concerns about the term length or not, you know, having increments of checking in and seeing where things are and what the next thing is. Um but I, you know, I've shared those and one other question to Mark is will there be any financial reporting from the Simsbury Soccer Club to the town manager at intervals as things go on? I think we have something like that with the PAC.
We do. We have things that like that with every MOU we have, with Main Street, the ambulance, SIMPAC.
Yeah, yeah, so so I would think that would be something good to make sure you guys are solvent, like, you know, we're not gonna get left the million. I don't, it sounds like you guys are in good shape, but I'm just things like that to include in the MOU, so it's solid for both sides. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mark and or Tom to kind of just go through.
Thanks so much. I'm I'm gonna ask Tom to play cleanup, because I'll try to go through these uh ma- maybe not in order, but there was some overlap. So just in general terms, uh we were able to address the uh the financial piece of this that Heather raised at the top, uh that the that the licensing fee is just one revenue stream. That is new to us. Uh but we're also planning on increasing the uh the per player fee, as we talked about before. Uh and we can give the board some fiscal analysis of what that would be preliminarily. Those two moves do cover more than any anticipated increased cost to the town for at least five or six years. And and to Stephen's point about the rate of inflation, uh there is one tier that's built in there to the licensing fee. We can jigger that with continued discussions with uh our partners at at uh SEC. Um but at the end of the day, we've got a a pretty good uh group of folks vetting this before the final version comes back to you. Uh our finance director takes a look at it, our risk manager takes a look at it, my deputy takes a look at it. Tom T has been all over it with Ben and his team. Um you know, the the I just remind the board that the board, I think it was January, early February, passed the 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 motion directing me to negotiate with Ben and his team on this and we we got off to a little bit of a late start. We've really been working on it hard for for a good three or four months now. And we've wrestled with many of the same questions that the board has asked. The first one that's important to us is the is the term, right? Uh we had a similar discussion with the term of the PAC agreement and 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 we have back and forth with Jeff's team when we were negotiating the MOU for the Performing Arts Center. Um I I will liken it to bonding, cause I know we've got finance uh gurus in the room, but you know, to Stephen's point about this this term, if if we were going out to bond for the six million in improvements, call it five million, whatever, you're gonna bond for the the anticipated useful life of the improvements and and no more. Uh and so what we wanted to do is is recommend to this board an MOU that gives the the soccer club the the best leverage possible to to hit their fundraising targets. And that's what we did with the PAC as well. Um the prior MOU with the PAC was only five years. And I can tell you right now, and Jeff can correct me later when it's his turn, I doubt that the PAC would have been able to raise nine hundred and four thousand dollars for their project had we not entered into uh that length of a term. And so it was the same discussion for the PAC. Um if we were bonding the money, I think we would, we would need to be able to have a twenty year term. And I I think to his funders and the people that are putting their money on the table, they need to to have some assurance of the of the term of the agreement. That brings me to the exclusivity, which is also the reason that word is is important to you and it was important to us. And it's important to Ben is is because that also is a lever that that helps us with the fundraising piece of this, right? Um I'll circle back at the end to what the benefit is. One of the public commenters made the comment about, well, only eight hundred to a thousand kids are benefiting from the use of this, uh and we've got twenty some thousand kids in town and what's the benefit to every resident? Uh and I wanna be sure that I finish up with that, because I had a note to 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 actually directly uh address that. So to Heather's point, there is sufficient revenue there. Uh it's a revenue increase, a ra- a rather sharp increase that maybe we wouldn't have thought about doing had we not been in uh all of these discussions. We do think that a twenty year term is uh is the appropriate term, but we 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 did on on our side of the table start at fifteen and, you know, candidly, we'll tell the board that that's what we had on the table in the in the in our negotiations, not a secret. And and Ben's uh Ben did a good job of saying, hey, you know, I really need twenty, but you know, nothing, nothing's carved in stone. Um other question that was raised, also really good and probably a miss on our part, is the public safety. Um and I won't disagree with Ben, but the fact that he only got one call for a parked car on on and it's probably, you know, I don't wanna rest our laurels on that. I think we certainly have a great public safety uh committee here that could take a look at this. And I I do have to say, I I did not talk to the police chief about this and I and I will do so. I think that was a very good uh a a good idea. Uh I wanna jump uh to one of Curtis's questions about another, probably the the, I'll give you the bad news first. I don't think another location works, so I I kinda wanna, you know, gotta throw cold water on that and and Ben, you can speak to that too. I think that, you know, Curtis Park has been the 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 premier and the pres- the the premier location. And Tom clean clean up on this too, but I I think I'd like to put to rest tonight the idea that that maybe there could be another location. We did start by looking around the town and and uh my my own view is is no, we can't do that. So um as to a couple notes on artificial turf. Um again, we're here just looking at the MOU. The MOU envisions that our land use boards and other approvers will take a look at that. Um from Ben's perspective, I don't wanna speak for you, Ben, but you know, really the cost of this is, it's a big ticket item, so it depends on their fundraising ability, number one. Um but but more importantly, the town does have uh great people in in other approving roles. So we don't make the MOU turn on turf or no turf. We don't address that. But what we do need to uh encapsulate in the MOU is that if it is turf, who's doing the repair work then? And that's that's really an important thing, which Tom can speak to a little bit. And we need to make sure that we protect the town and our taxpayers against what we don't know. And we know what the facilities are there now and what it costs us now. Uh we have less of a handle on what, although Tom is 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 pretty good on the numbers, so we need to do that um before we finalize this uh as well. Um so we've got, I just wanna uh close with uh comments about the benefit to everybody in the community. I kinda started as a little bit of a skeptic, you know, coming from the point of view of what I heard tonight, the exclusivity, twenty years, it's a long time, it's public land and so forth. Uh a couple of the commenters at public comment had that view. I I my own view has evolved significantly when we look at the charge that this board and other boards have to make sure that we're doing the right thing by our taxpayers. Uh and and the town right now cannot afford to do this without the philanthropy, fundraising and the generosity of our partners. The idea that municipal governments use and work hand in hand, and it goes for the PAC too, in partnership with nonprofit organizations is a fundamental core of good government. The idea that we could do it on our own, those days are over. And one of the public commenters said quite candidly, we don't need it. It was fine the way it was. I don't think that's what I heard. I heard the fields are deteriorating. I heard there's no lighting. I heard the restrooms, I heard concessions, you know. Uh so from my point of view, I think the project takes three to six million dollars, put it in a range, off the backs of our taxpayers. And if you were to divide that i- into the grand levy and do the same type of calculation that we put on the screen every year as part of our budget cycle, you could back into what their philanthropy saves our taxpayers. And now you've got two issues. One is, do you want it or not? And if you want it, this is what it would cost us to do it and this is what uh it would cost them to do it. Uh and and when you put all that in front of this board, I think hopefully we could get support for it. So uh finally, uh the public safety, I I will get that to the chief and to the public safety committee. Um we've got uh finance will give us a fiscal impact on on the future Um, we've got, uh, finance will give us a fiscal impact on, on the future cost. Uh, I wanna turn it over to Tom just to play cleanup for anything that I missed. Uh, but I just wanna say, Ben, thank you for, for working on this with me, I know we've gone back and forth on a number of things and I appreciate. I learned a lot from you through this process, cause I'm not a.
I've learned a lot too.
I was more of a rugby player, I have to say, not a soccer player, so I, I learned a lot and, and thanks very much, Tom. Uh, I know they wanna keep it brief, but.
Yeah, that, that's a tough act to follow, Mark.
Whenever I forgot, please, uh, correct.
Yeah, I, I mean, the only thing I, I will add to that is there was some talk about, you know, what the, I think Wendy may have said it, Steve said it as well, what the future maintenance cost is. If it remains grass field, it's not a significant increase of, over what we're doing now, I mean, it's, it, there's gonna be some field improvements there, is there? Uh, they go to pavement, pavement lots, uh, during the winter and they build a concession stand during the winter, we're gonna be plowing access, emergency access for the, uh, fire. You know, should there be a fire or damage that they can get to that? We don't maintain those, those parking lots during the winter time at this point. And I'm not saying we're gonna plow the entire lot out, we're just maintaining access to the, to those buildings should something hap- should something be needed. Um, if they go to turf, is there an increase in maintenance? Costs, they're gonna be buying the equip, you know, the MOU says they'll buy the equipment necessary to maintain the turf field. They'll be, they'll, we've talked about a storage, they've done them as part of the project, building a storage facility to keep that equipment in. So we're not transporting it back and forth, we don't really have space for all the stuff we have now. Um, and additionally, the, they will be doing, they'll be covering the annual impact testing, uh, that's required for turf fields. You know, the, what we'll pick up that we don't do now over there is we'll be doing some brushing, you know, three weeks to, three to five weeks depending on use. Brushing and fluffing up the turf, um, we do that now at the high, we do that now as part of the maintenance at the high school. Uh, we just be doing, you know, we're now we're doing that over there. And so instead of mowing those fields every three or four, those two turf fields, if that happens, every three or four weeks we'll be fluffing it up. Um, you know, Mark pretty much covered everything, there's a lot of little things in there, as far as repair costs and things like that, that we'll get those answers back to you. I mean, if there's anything, you know, eating at you right now that I, that you think I can answer, I'd be happy to talk about it, but.
Just one other quick thing, Wendy, uh, sorry, the, uh, financial reporting that Diana mentioned. And so that, there, there is a section, I was just looking in the draft, uh, where, uh, SSC will be in front of this board once a year. And we got that, I think, from, from those of you on the board, I know, uh, Kevin, uh, and, and Diana, we had that on the, I think it's in the PAC deal as well. Uh, so, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
I just have a, uh, just making sure going forward, will there need to be, uh, addendums to the MOU?
Yeah.
Once the faci- once the plan is, uh, and, and the facility build out is done. Because what's not addressed in here is some of those things like, um, that we do have in other MOUs for if there's going to be concessions that Ben has garbage that, you know, who, who is, um, responsible for cost for that garbage removal? Who, what about bathroom, uh, facility cleaning? Are the bathrooms that are gonna be open all the time or only during usage of, you know, gives, and I, this is just because that would require different levels of maintenance, so.
So that, I was gonna, oh, I was gonna say.
We've actually covered that in there, they, they will be paying, yes.
Most of that is in there in the, in the fine print.
It's, it's, yeah.
So what I, it would be nice to have some schedules, like a, as an addendum, that really just lay out
Right.
Maintenance, you know, basic maintenance, you know, and then potential extended maintenance will be discussed at a future date. Because it's really hard to just read this, um, it would be great to see more of a.
As a breakout.
Breakout, so we can, we can say we checked that box and we know that if there's an additional need and it's not in the list, you know, it's on the soccer club, or if it's in the list and we're not doing it, the soccer club can say you're not doing your, you know, your stuff.
Well, and as the building happens, or, you know, plans may change according to your fundraising and the zoning and whatever, as we know, costs of things. Um, so make sure that they're, you're covered, the other, uh, only other issue is making sure that you have accessibility, uh, needs covered within fields.
And one, one more thing, I, I'd like what Curtis said, I wanna bring that up. Um, is there a way to get a, a quick overview assessment from planning and zoning? Or is the zoning department to make sure that this plan is feasible? Has George and his team seen the master plan? Um, to identify floodway, floodplain, close to the river, impact to the river access that people use? Um, i- i- is there something like that and can we do that before this gets pushed through? I mean, just so you have an idea, I thought that was a good point.
The answer is yes, everybody was at the table in the, for the kickoff meeting and everybody had a chance to comment. At the end of the day, it's on the soccer club to bring these applications forward to the, the various land use boards. But yes, George and his team saw the original plan. Um, but again, it's a, it's a, it's a concept, right? So it's, the idea is to bring it in phases, it's hard to put a timeline on it because the fundraising aspect. Um, we can break out the, who's responsible for what. The original plan, I think, is, is to your point, Wendy, we were gonna do that as a appendix C. Uh, and maybe we go back to that, you know, because I, I think I like that idea too.
One thing I add to that though is, like, um, cause I'm a liaison, liaison for zoning.
Yep.
So people come in with, um, concept ideas, so they can get feedback. So if you get to just have some feedback, I'm not, I'm not people pulling, actually, I would say, your number of one thousand students going through there? It's actually more, because every year that's a thousand, and it's another thousand, and it's, you know, people moving into the town. So it's, it's more than just one thousand people affected by the twenty five, whatever, twenty five thousand people gone through that program. So I think it is, it, it packs more than, we just say one, like, one twentieth of the population.
I think it's just a question, I, I would, you know, I would defer to the board, I would just say that if you get ahead of the approval of the MOU process and look at concept plans and whether or not they might be approved by the land use boards, it, it, you, you, you go down a bit of a slippery slope. Uh, in, in public meetings, they could influence, uh, people's willingness to, to donate mon- money to the project, right? So we're asking the main policy board, the board of selection, to, to conceptually, you know, agree to this, approve the MOU. Uh, and, and, uh, and then take it to the, the other boards for approvals as needed.
So one more question, cause it's still like your point. If, if, if it goes, just an example, to inland wetlands and they don't approve the fields or the turf fields or something like that. Um, is there a clause that either terminates or, you know, wh- what happens? Is, is there, will we have something in here if certain steps of the way don't happen because they're zoning? Or somebody said they couldn't do them, or engineering found some major issue?
Chapter fifteen.
Yeah.
It's in chapter fifteen, it's in default, no early termination.
Okay, so that would, would this would fall into that, or do we need to say there's certain conditions of what the termination would be?
What, what we don't want, in, in my view, what we don't wanna do is, is put in an automatic termination clause.
Yeah.
Just based on an action of another board not approving a component.
A consideration also, maybe, right? Not a termination, but a recon- reconfiguration, you know, just something to bring it back to the table instead of terminating that, you find a new path to forward, I, I don't know, just, I'm just throwing that out there because it's gonna rejig, rejiggered, I guess. Um, so with that, there's no more comments, I'm gonna ask to make a motion to table this. Um, until the fin- the MOU puts together everything that we've said here tonight, we go to legal, we go to insurance, we go to public safety. And to come back with a more final.
Typically, don't, I think, have it, um, a motion on the table, uh, to table, but it's, it, yeah.
It, it was, we put it on as a courtesy, Mark wanted it on as a thing, we did say that we would most likely table.
Right, that we never had a motion.
To, to do what? Anyway, there's a motion to table.
Uh, the agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so this, the motion's tabled, okay.
Thank you.
Sure, sure, thank you, thank you, Ben. Thanks for all that work. And Ken, and Tom, please, Tom has to still stay.
Don't remind me, Wendy, thank you.
Well, this is easy, this is easy, this, we're just scheduling a public hearing regarding dogs, my favorite topic.
You didn't, you didn't put this on consent? I'm sorry.
No, we didn't, we didn't.
Okay.
We didn't, just so people hear about it, I guess was my thinking, right? Um, do you wanna say anything, we, or you could say it at the next meeting.
Nope, no, nothing.
Okay, I'd like to ask for a motion effective July fourteenth, twenty twenty five, to set a public hearing to receive public comment concerning a proposed ordinance relating to dogs at recreation facilities, athletic fields and trails for six P M on Monday, August eleventh, twenty twenty five.
Second.
Second, anybody?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, this also wasn't on the consent, just so people know that we're scheduling a public hearing for an ordinance regarding effective date of tax exemption. Do you wanna just give a blurb on this, Mark?
Uh, you, you just briefly, in case any of the board members had questions, uh, and we'll, we'll get something on our website about this if you do set the public hearing. Very short ordinance, it grew out of this board's action, uh, to authorize us to seek a tax waiver from the Office of Policy and Management at the State of Connecticut, uh, for a tax exempt church that purchased a property from a former tax exempt church and got caught in the twilight zone of being, it's not ex- of being, it, being taxable for a short period of time. This, uh, local law would, would, had it been on the books at the time, would have made all of that unnecessary. Uh, this is just a cleanup, it's probably never gonna be used, uh, but we had it on our desk because of what happened with the Manassas Church. Uh, and, uh, so we recommend that, uh, the board set a public hearing, hear from the public. Uh, and then we'll be prepared to, uh, give you a fiscal analysis on it, we don't really think it has any financial impact at all. If it's used once in the next dozen years, I'd be surprised.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask for a motion effective July fourteenth, twenty twenty five, to set a public hearing, to receive public comment concerning a proposed ordinance relating to the effective date of a tax exemption upon real property acquisition for qualifying tax exempt entities for six P M on Monday, August eleventh, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Monday, August eleventh is gonna be a exciting night.
That is one way to say it.
Be it tonight and next Saturday.
Okay.
It's very exciting.
So now we have the update that everyone's been waiting for on the Performing Arts Center Banshel project and to, um, ask Mark to authorize the construction contract. We have Mark and Adam here to talk about the contents here, I'd like to turn this over to them to present, um, what we're, we're voting on.
Thanks Chair. Uh, in your packets is a draft contract with Millennium Builders. And I'll draw your attention to the memorandum, uh, that accompanies the submission. Um, and again, I'm just here to give the board an update, uh, and to entertain questions about the budget funding. Uh, and some of the other challenges that, that we've had. And, uh, Adam, who you all know is here, representing the engineering and public works. Uh, our director of public works, Tom Roy, is in, uh, Ireland on vacation. And Adam has graciously, uh, uh, agreed to, uh, help me out with all of this. Um, you know, just to give the board, you know, two or three minutes of background on this. The funding for the Performing Arts Center is comprised of a number of, uh, for the project is comprised of a number of key elements. Um, and the referendum question was a calculation that took, uh, the estimated project, uh, which for now, I'm just gonna say is two point seven million, give or take. Uh, it applied a, a nine hundred thousand T E C D grant from the state of Connecticut. Three hundred and fifty thousand in previously appropriated funds from the town of Simsbury. And then most recently, another appropriation that this board specifically approved and the voters approved at referendum, which was the five hundred thousand that was, uh, presented to you as part of my first manage, uh, uh, budget as your, as your town manager. So altogether briefly, and for those watching at home, eight hundred and fifty coming from the town, nine hundred thousand coming from the state. And the referendum question had the calculation subtracting from the two point seven. The PAC is gonna raise the, the rest is, and, and so voters were told at referendum and asked at referendum, do you support uh, the project based on a total cost, two seven, and this, you know, fundamentally this breakdown how we get to it. Um, subsequent to that authorization, we went out to bid. Uh, Adam's team and Tom's team put this out through the conventional procurement channels. We got, uh, I would say, a pretty good response. Um, the range of bids was, uh, as expected. Um, hats off to the team because the, the winning bid came in just under two point seven million. And the estimate of the town engineer and the town TPW commissioner were, uh, director were, I gotta tell you, the closest I've seen in thirty years. And Bill, I see Bill play, it's, it's, uh, it was un- unbelievable, I was, I, I shouldn't have been surprised with these guys, but check the box, we knew what we were doing. Um, because the referendum question said, uh, you know, was posed the way it was. The PAC had always said, we're gonna raise eight hundred, nine hundred, you know, we're not quite sure what the number is, but we're gonna raise that number. Uh, we were very clear on the town side, we're raising, uh, we're gonna put up five hundred thousand in addition to the three fifty. Um, and so where are we today? We have a, a shortfall that is, it, it's kind of a moving target. Uh, and it, it, it arises because the pro- project has to have some level of contingency funding in it. In case there are unforeseen expenses. And that's what's causing a little bit of consternation, uh, for me. I'd refer you to the, uh, page that Adam put in there and I'm gonna turn it over to Adam in a minute to walk through the numbers that are presented to you, scenario one and scenario two. I wanna be clear for the rest, that the bid amount and even the incidentals that we've already spent are under the referendum threshold. And there is absolutely no thought on either side of the table that we, we need to go back to the voters for any additional monies above the referendum number, I'm gonna say it's two seven, two seven and change. That is not what is the issue before us. The issue is that in order to have a, a safety and a, a cushion in any major construction project. I've been educated that we need four, five, six percent in contingency and, you know, when you dig in the ground, bad things tend to happen, right? If they don't happen, we're fine, we're under the budget, we're at about two six. And, uh, Adam will give you the exact numbers, but, you know, we could sign the contract tomorrow. The trepidation that I have is that all these projects need contingency. And when my key people, who are as good as they are, tell me we need contingency, if I bake in that contingency, we do not go over the referendum number, but we go over the two point six and change that's been raised. The difference is about a hundred and twenty eight grand. So I just wanna be clear that worst case scenario, we're a hundred and twenty eight grand apart at the moment. And that is entirely made up of contingency items that we don't know we're gonna need. That's the irony here, is that, uh, you, you know, we may never need them. But discretion tells me we probably will. If that happens, I gotta come back to this board for a supplemental appropriation. Or we've gotta ask our partners at the PAC, uh, to guarantee, uh, uh, or put up some more money in the event that were to happen. So we've had some discussions and I just wanna close and then take some questions. On June, uh, twenty third, we had our first meeting, uh, between the sides of, of, of the table on this. And we were about two hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars, uh, apart, or, you know, away from, from our goal. And at that time, you know, we both went to our corners, Jeff and his folks and me and mine. Uh, Adam's team value engineered roughly a hundred and nine thousand. With Bill's help and others, we, we shaved a hundred and nine thousand off the cost of the project, that helped. Jeff went back to his board and his fundraisers, uh, funders and, and raised another hundred. The total amount of, of the, and they've done a wonderful job raising money. Nine hundred, uh, the number I have right now in front of me is nine hundred and four thousand, might be a little higher than that. But, you know, the PAC has raised nine hundred and four thousand. Prior to the bid going out, they also paid for design specs and other things that, as this board knows, you know, could be valued at about a, a, a hundred thousand, give or take. So as I sit here today, and again, I'm just the town manager, but I'm gonna tell you that, as my perspective, not a lawyer, the referendum was, the question was spot on, we're not going over the two point seven. They raised a million, that's, that was there, we put up the three fifty, the five hundred, why don't the numbers work? They don't work because the hundred was raised outside of the bid to, to pay for pre-bid spec stuff that was necessary for us to even put out the bid, right? So they should get credit for that, they raised the money, but it's outside of the total package, that's number one. Number two, and Adam will speak to this, just since we got the bids back and started getting ready for this project, we discovered a couple of things over there at the property that are hurting us. There's some dirt that needs to be, and again, I'm not an engineer, but you gotta dig it up and you gotta fill it in. And that's estimated to cost us sixty thousand, it wasn't there before. And they, they, they did a, a test well or whatever they do, these guys, and they found some electrical or utilities over there. And it's gonna cost us twenty or twenty five grand to get that utility service relocated. I would say this, we've already discovered eighty five thousand in contingency and we had enough room in the budget to do it. So that's the good news. The bad news is that ate up almost all of our contingency. When you look at those two scenarios in front of you, scenario one is what we would be, the comfort we would have if we had the full two point seven. Uh, the, the top number in the referendum, if we had that available, we would, you would see, you see the contingency number there at a hundred and something percent. We'd feel more confident. Um, the scenario B, which is really kinda where we are, uh, is the actual numbers. And it is, uh, it is very, very tight. So what I'm gonna propose to the board is that, you know, we're gonna move forward, you know, everybody's done a great job. I, I, Jeff, if you have questions, maybe you could help too. Um, I think, I think we move forward with this, but we still have, uh, a, a, a need for about a hundred and twenty eight thousand in contingency. And there's, there's really only a few things to do about that, either the PAC raises additional funds, the town has a supplemental appropriation, or some mixture of those two, some, some cost sharing. the town has a supplemental appropriation, or some mixture of those two, some, some cost sharing. What I propose to this board is that we crush that bridge when we come to it. Um, and both sides continue to work in, in good faith together, which is what they've done. Uh, and Adam, can you please help me explain to the board what the hell we're talking about? Thank you.
Sure. I'll take it from an engineer.
Please do.
Perspective, that's not an attorney or town manager. So bear with me. So scenario A is, is working awfully far from a referendum number. And that's, that's how, um, I've certainly looked at this from, from the get-go. That's, that's our top line and that's how we approach these things. Cost to date, just going through, you know, those incidentals. That's, uh, some supplemental, um, design that had to happen before we went to bid. That's some bid costs, uh, with the grant involved, we have to pay for advertising in the bid to the Hartford Current that takes their, you know, seven hundred dollars. Just because, um, uh, there are some costs associated with the grant. So even though we get nine hundred thousand dollars, we also have to pay for the attorney fees. So it's really less than nine hundred thousand, but, you know, it's still a lot of money. So we do it. So we have another component, um, of redesign that has to happen. Uh, we did include that in the bid as an allowance to the contractor. Um, so that's thirteen thousand to make some tweaks for fire separation. Um, construction admin, the thirty-two to colliers, that is to really make sure what was designed is being proposed and being built, includes their inspection, attendance at meetings. Um, it's what we always kinda carry. And that's a fairly low number considering the, the building, um, and the project value. Uh, Tri-State is a special inspections and testing and, and that has to do with the building code. You know, we're building a structure with foundation that has inspection and testing that's related to, um, that component. We have steel structures, so there's going to be an inspector for the steel. All of these things are special inspections that are required by building code. Um, that is, is an allowance number, uh, based on their review of the plans and specs and what they normally do. I know Tri-State puts together a very, uh, thorough package for our building department so that their reviews are easier, um, better tracking and everything. And that, that's kinda who we, we reached out to for a budget number. As built an elevation certificate, that's something that happens after construction. Uh, and that's required for zoning and, um, the fact that we're in the area of a floodplain. It essentially just confirms that our building elevation is higher than the floodplain, which it's going to be because it's the same elevation as the stage and that's above. So it's just some paperwork that we get to do, uh, with a consultant that requires a surveyor, um, to sign off and do some work there. So altogether, that's about a hundred thirty-three thousand. Um, then we get to our base bid, two point five one six, uh, to Millennium. The alternate number two that we're going to accept, uh, no matter what at this point because of the unsuitables, which we'll get to, is, um, the existing siding on the building will remain. It'll be kinda repaired as necessary, but it'll, it'll remain. There'll be a, a, you know, nice little trim piece put between the old and the new. And that's how we'll proceed. The original bid, uh, the base bid included redoing the siding of the entire building. Uh, to me, that's one of those easy, you know, if you have extra money, let's say you, you have really good feeling about your budget. You have money, that's an easy one to add back if the timing's right. Because your entire building from the outside looks like a new building, uh, with new siding. Um, the value there was about twenty-eight thousand, just as we're going down the list. Unsuitable soils, we, um, this was a decision that, uh, we made a few weeks ago or a month ago. That, uh, there were no, uh, subsoil investigations performed during the design period. Um, so T P W went out there and dug two test pits. Um, we have machines, we get, we like to use them. So dug a couple pits just to get a good feeling. One pit, nice sand, looked native to us. The other pit had, uh, some buried wood, construction material, some aluminum. Um, you know, basically was a buried pit from, from years and years ago. To build a foundation, um, to building code, we have to, that has to be founded on native soils or an engineered soil. So the approach that we'd like to take and, and are suggesting here is allocating, you know, sixty thousand dollars to that unknown of saying, what if half of that building area needs to be replaced with engineered fill? We're choosing half just because, you know, one out of two test pits showed some stuff that certainly has to be removed. You know, just to the north, the development that's under construction now, we know they've had to replace some unsuitable soils, some non-natives, uh, and replace with engineered fill. So I think this is a, an appropriate allocation of funds. Um, and sixty thousand gets us, you know, a few feet of, of replacement. We have a unit cost for that from the contractor as well, so, which is fair for what it is. Um, the relocation of existing utilities, uh, again, not in a design plan. So we know we're gonna have to pay some money to relocate a couple, uh, water services, one that goes out to the, um, the shed. Another one that goes out to the dog park. Uh, there's some electrical utilities that will also have to be relocated and these are just within the building envelope. You know, it's one of those situations where, you know, could you relocate those advanced in the project? And essentially, you're gonna create a problem for the contractor because now he has to watch out for damaging those utilities. And the cost, he's already trenching, he's already ma- doing the work out there. So let's allocate some funds for that. So that's our best estimate, um, for that. And, um, so without touching any value engineering, uh, assuming a referendum number, we end up with a contingency of, of forty-eight thousand. That to us is, is very risky for the town. Uh, so then we get into our V E stuff, our politely called value engineering, where we just start taking things out or substituting, um, material. Um, some of these I think are, are no-brainer. We're gonna do no matter what the funding level is. Um, you know, the railing type, we're gonna go to a, to match the other railings out there. So that's, uh, you know, almost eight thousand roof material. Uh, this design included, um, standing seam. But our intent, I think, Performing Arts Center intent is to put solar on top. So why cover an expensive roof? Let's use asphalt, it's just as good, um, for the purpose. So we have some savings there. Uh, F R P product is a, a wall product in the bathrooms. Dock bumper, um, we just have to be extra careful backing up into the dock. Window treatments, easy add after the fact. Um, casework encounters in the work area, that's, uh, another value we, we understand is about forty-seven thousand for a contractor. Um, not required for a C O, so it'll just be a blank wall. Blank walls all around. The room will be, have no casework or counters. And that's where we get our V E amount of one oh nine. Um, you know, only a few of these are, are certainly no brainers. There are some that we don't wanna, I mean, I'd rather not turn over a blank room. Um, but, you know, this is where we're at. Um, so that gets us down to about a hundred fifty-seven thousand in contingency. Six percent, which I, I think we can be comfortable with. Uh, to be honest, I, I love going into projects with ten percent, especially when they involve touching the existing building. You just never know what you're going to, um, open up. Um, I know Eno's a little older than the benchell, but we're doing the entrance project, for example, and, you know, excavated there and found out we have to underpin the foundation. Uh, which is part of our bid. We got a number just in case, but still, it's another twenty thousand dollars. Um, these things always happen. And that's where, even though we're building in eighty-five thousand for the unsuitable soils and the, um, utility relocation, we still have a building that we have to open and connect to. And there could be a lot of unknowns there. Or you get in the building and you start to lay things out and all of a sudden you have to move some stuff. I mean, th- this is just part of construction for us. Uh, and that's where we always try to approach it with, you know, ten percent and that's when we feel really, really good. For the building, for the size and kinda for the scope, and the more we look at this, I, I think we're comfortable with that five to seven percent range. I think seven percent we probably won't get, but five to six percent after the eighty-five thousand for unsuitables. And that, that gets us more, you know, closer to an eight percent contingency on a project. At the end of the day, in terms of, uh, when, when do I start to sleep at night, for example? When the foundations are in and the existing buildings opened up and we know what we're working with, we're out of the ground. And if we haven't touched that eighty-five thousand, um, or maybe it's only twenty, we begin, we, we feel great. We have a, a good contingency to continue, um, with the project, with, with these. So it's, it's really just dealing with the unknowns. You know, I used to design projects quite a bit on the private side and I wish I could say every job I did was perfect. Uh, but it's just, it's just not. It never is. So that's, that's where, that's a quick review of, of the numbers, not really quick at all. From a referendum standpoint. But looking at it from the actual funding at hand is the scenario B. Um, all the same costs, except we're starting with the, the actual funding, which is a hundred twenty-eight thousand dollars less. Essentially, that gets us down to a project contingency cost of, of twenty-nine thousand, which is one percent. And that's where we, we would not recommend, you know, proceeding with the project. Um, it's, it's just way too risky. You know, essentially, the, one of the other ways we looked at it was, alright, as we're signing contracts, because we have to have money in hand to sign contracts. Before we put a shovel in the ground, we have a contingency of, of twenty grand. And then we add in our V E items and, and that kinda stuff. And it's not a good place to be, uh, to be honest. Um, and, you know, it's, I feel like half the time the engineer in the room is an ace there. So take it for, for what it's worth, but I think, I think we've kinda squeezed, uh, the lemon as much as possible for V E in this project. I don't think there's much we can carve out at this point. Um, so the, the numbers are the numbers for us. I'm happy to ask.
Alright, you ready? You done?
I've been, I've been waiting.
Alright. I figured I'd let you wither on the. Um, Tri-State, fifty K, are they doing soil sampling or concrete testing or both?
Everything. That's, um, that's everything. That's all the soil testing.
So a lot of that we do on the, on the developer side is done as a courtesy to the town. And a lot of it is optional, as you know. Is this like the tightest you can get? It seems a, a pretty, I mean, a nice, i- it's not completely out of the ballpark, don't misread me.
Right.
But it's definitely seems like a nice to have figure at fifty K.
Um, yeah, it's, uh, it's everything we need. It's coordination of all the testing. Um, you know, it's about five different, four different disciplines out, out of them, out of their office. Um, as you know, a lot of those inspections can be bundled up if, if the project's ready. Um, so you're not paying for every single visit for every single discipline. And, um, you know, could we get it closer to forty? I think we can with good management and, and a contractor that, that wants to coordinate and, and do this. I, I think we could. Um, I just don't.
How do we do that? Let's jump to the chase.
Just change the number on the page. You should keep chipping away.
Yeah, and that, that's kinda the trouble we have is if we, if we continue to nickel and dime the numbers, we, we don't really get to that, that contingency we need.
Are you getting another bid? Tri-State is an excellent company. I don't want to throw any shade on them. However, they're not the only company.
No, they're not.
Any competitive bids?
We've had, uh, we could certainly go out to R F P and, and, and hope we get a better number. Um, we've had certainly.
Go to one other company instead of doing the whole R F P and crossing our fingers that they see it.
Yeah, you have to.
No, I know, but you think.
Yeah, that's fair. And under a certain threshold, we can, we can select, uh, based on qualifications and, and we can. We've had, we've also had experiences with other testing companies that are not timely and not, uh, willing to work with you. And we, we can certainly go look for that. It's, it's going to maybe add in another ten grand. Uh, but again, if we get into a situation where we have unsuitables, all of the new material we bring in, all that engineered fill has to be compacted, you know, foot by foot by foot and each has to be tested. So that's kind of where that, that issue becomes is, alright, okay, great, we have a lower number. But now we end up paying for more trips out here because we have unsuitables and then the number goes back up.
Well, that's what contingency is in our fairness.
Right. But again, like, I'm, I'm saying like that does have a little bit of wiggle room in contingency and for just, just the testing. But I don't want our contingency to necessarily cover multiple things outside of just construction at this point.
Okay, let's, let's switch just one last, uh, item for me. Um, so we pulled out casework, which is cabinets. It just sounds better when you call it cabinets. Everyone knows what it means.
I didn't.
Encounters. Who's gonna pay for them eventually? They're gonna need to put stuff down. So is that the Performing Arts Center in the future that's gonna have to pay for a counter? Or will that, will you come back to the town? Just, you know, it's not gonna go away.
A good portion of that's coming from my office. I'm closing my office in August. Yeah. Bookcases and counters and.
Sounds more like you're moving your office instead of closing.
Yeah, I, I got stuff coming out of my room. So a lot of that's kind of.
Alright, so it, it would be the Performing Arts Center would take that up.
Yeah.
That's really where I was going. I'm done.
Okay.
Anyone?
No, I guess we're trying to engage Millennium Builders to move forward so we can get the project going in the fall.
Yeah, I think, you know, look, just to, the, the elephant in the room is, is that, you know, and I talked to the town attorney, you know, we, we, we have the authorizations in hand to sign the contract. Um, but, you know, full, full transparency, we, we've got good people on board that are telling us that, you know, it, we, 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 if we go with what we've got and that would be scenario B and, and contingency of just under thirty grand, we could be back here, you know, looking for a supplemental. Or we relying on our partners at the PAC to raise more money. When they've raised nine hundred and four thousand post bid and roughly a hundred that they had in reserves that they used beforehand. So I just need to put it out there for the board so that everybody knows and we're on the record is clear that we are below the threshold of the referendum. We're in compliance with all of the bonding. Our partners, in, in my view, our partners have done what we've asked them to do. Um, I'm ready to sign the contract. But if my guys are right, and they always are, we're gonna be short. How do we address that? Well, we've had discussions with, with Jeff and, and the PAC about, uh, they're raising more money. And, and, you know, they're, they've, they've done a wonderful job, but we're gonna continue with those discussions. You know, I, I, I think that if, if the board asked my opinion on this, I would say that some portion of the, of the extra, let's say it's a hundred and twenty-eight grand, maybe we could fund it out of year-end savings. Or even departmental operational savings that, that again, you don't need to go back to the voters. That's in my view anyway. I, I know Wendy and I disagree about that.
That's my question.
Um, and again, for the record, I'm not an attorney, but to me, it's that top number on the referendum. And, and have we all done what we said we would do when the, when we asked the voters to go and vote? Projects come in short, a hundred grand on, on a three million dollar project all the time. This isn't, this isn't the end of the world. And we've worked so hard to get, to get here that, uh, my recommendation would be that the board just authorize me to tell the PAC that, you know, split that one twenty-eight and, and call it a day.
Yeah, so I, I just have a comment, and we have a board of finance member here too.
Oh, boy.
Well, I'm just saying.
You have not.
So I, I, I'm going by the book. I'm just going by what we're, you know, laws and policies and things that we have in front of us, right? Um, we asked the voters who approved five hundred thousand dollars for this project. If we need to add more money and approve it here and ask the board of finance for that money, I want to know what our legal, what legally we have to do. Do we have to go back to the voters to ask for another fifty thousand dollars? Because that's what they committed to. I don't know that answer. I would, that's, I know Mark give it, we both have different views, but that would be something I would want an answer to so that we don't do anything that we're not supposed to do. Um, and, and I know fifty thousand may not be a lot of money, but if it is legally in jeopardy, it's our bonding notice is five hundred. I know it doesn't, that's bonded money, but, um, actually it's capital reserve.
Capital reserve, yeah.
So, um, just, I don't wanna say we're gonna eat half the costs. If legally, we have to do something to do that and ask multiple people for that money. I, and we don't, again, we're talking about money. I and we don't, again, we're talking about money that we may need or may not need.
Right.
So I I I want this project to go forward. We all want this project to go forward. So I'm kind of um inclined to move forward, but I do wanna make sure that if we need more money, we're not just gonna come here and ask for a supplemental appropriation. Without making sure we don't hit every button that we're supposed to hit.
So I I did have a conversation with the town attorney and and he, you know, verbally and without, you know, looking at all the case law preliminarily. And we can get something from him in writing indicated to me on a phone call today that with respect to the referendum question and the phrasing. Uh the 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 town could put up a lo- a a an additional amount of money if it if it wanted. In terms of our charter and our code uh for supplemental appropriations, both the board of finance and the board of selectmen are required. If however, it's an internal department transfer from um other lines, if there's a savings there, my understanding is we might not need board of finance approval. Not that we wouldn't get it, but I just wanna put that put out there that if if, you know, I'm inclined to sign it too. I just wanna share all the information that I have. With you, the good and the bad. And so everybody is on the same page. We don't have a need for the contingency yet. The eighty-five that's been identified is covered in this. And and so we could sign the contract today. And probably be back here in a couple of months, um you know, depending on the timing of this, if if uh, you know, if something happens. By that time, we'll have an idea what year-end savings is. But what I can tell this board, and Adam, please correct me if I'm wrong, is is that. Both the PAC and the town administrative side are saying that that difference is the maximum is the one twenty-eight. In other words, everybody knows we're not going over that referendum number. Is that right, Jeff? Is that right, Adam?
Yeah, we can.
We can't. So, well, I I I, there was a school project where we went back. It was before I got here, but I've been told. You went back.
Went back to referendum.
Yeah, but but.
We don't want.
We do not wanna do that, and the voters have spoken and and they've given us the approval, and we're under that approval. But I just wanna be clear with my board before I sign off on the contract tomorrow that. You know, I'm still working with the PAC and, you know, I have confidence. That's what a partnership is. And I had this conversation with Jeff on Sunday afternoon and uh it's it's a uh. Or Friday afternoon, and it's a it's a partnership. We gotta work together. I can't. I can't say more than that.
I well, I oh, go ahead. Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, don't please.
I I mean, I do, I do, it was a question that came up in our meeting. Um that and I I want to see if it's if it's feasible.
Yep.
Um you know, with even that the unsuitable soils estimate of sixteen thousand dollars, it's town property currently. And would that be need to be remediated? I understand the but for clause, but is that something that could be, um, as you said, from uh year-end savings departmentally? From Parks and Rec or DPW, not to throw other departments under the bus, but um Tom's like, absolutely not. But you know, i- i- with year-end savings or something that is taken out of the project.
I could address that after talking to the town attorney, because there is a little bit of new information here. Because we're not seeking and we never would seek to go above the referendum total. It's a little less relevant whether you're pulling something out and saying it's part of the project or not, right? So if there were sixty thousand in savings somewhere in the DPW budget that could fund that. You'd still be well within your referendum and and from from a legal perspective, I think the town attorney would would sign off on that. All you're doing, Diana's proposal, is the sixty thousands peeled out of there because we discovered unsuitable soils. And that puts, essentially builds that contingency back up again. Now, the town would eat that sixty thousand somehow. And we haven't sorted that out yet because, you know, we're waiting for guidance from your board, but. I think that's only really a a a non-starter if you're pulling it out to exceed the referendum number, and that's not what's being proposed. Right? So there's nothing untoward going on. It's, you know.
Right.
It's our property, it's our soil.
Right.
Could, I wanna hear from Kevin.
Uh so we're past the why and should kind of phases. This is just a how, uh feels like for for me, right? So um an amazing amount of work that has been done on the fundraising. Um I just wanna make sure that I understand fully, because a couple of numbers have been thrown around. Um what was the total raised goal and what have you raised to date? It's a huge number. That's why, hopefully, if that's okay, I could ask.
Our committed goal uh at the time of the referendum was eight hundred thousand dollars. We had three hundred, this is what always confuses people, is that we've been thinking about this for years and we had saved three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from operation. And we needed to make four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to to get to that eight hundred thousand dollars. Our actual goal was six hundred thousand dollars because when this, this is the least sexy project you could have, it's back of stage, right? When it come, when it rolls out, we need to have something on the front of the stage. And we need the, and we need cash to do that. We can't bring in the kind of acts that we wanna bring in for the front of stage. And you can't run it the way we wanna run it, the way Simsbury would expect us to run it with no money.
Sure.
So we were actually raising six hundred thousand dollars. We are, um, we're short on that goal. But we have all of our four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in hand. When we first started talking, when we talked on June twenty-third. Um we were trying to knock down this number, and we got uh someone to guarantee the other hundred. So now it's nine hundred thousand dollars. And of course, long before, we never would have gotten the state money, the nine hundred thousand from the state. We hadn't had full plans ready to go, shovel ready. So that was a hundred thousand dollars that we spent there. And there's a five, and there's, and there's, yeah, it's more than, more than, but the, but there's a couple of factors. One is I wanna reference something that came up much earlier, you know, is the going to a fifteen-year contract. Because if you're in a five-year cycle, you're always somewhere in that five-year cycle. You're only in five-year for the first year, and then you're in a different cycle. We have a hundred thousand dollar donor and some other donors who who made their contribution over five years. That's not possible if you're three years into a contract. They're not, they're just not gonna do that. They don't know where their money's gonna go. So that that was a good decision. The other part of that is the reason that we're continuing to fundraise is that. We need to put things on that stage, and we need to be able to guarantee. When there's a, when there's a deficit in our organization, we pay for it. Right? You know, if school board doesn't pass a hat among school board members to make up for a deficit, we're accountable for that. And we just turned over um our audited numbers uh to the town manager, because we get audited every year. We put out an annual report every year. You can see our list of volunteers and you can see our list of donors. We're trying to move to the next thing. We're trying really hard. There's a million different projects that 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 we wanna do. We're working really hard to try and figure out how to get more more uh disabled parking closer to our facility, but that requires vans and. It requires transportation, that requires money, that requires paying a driver overtime to be there until ten o'clock at night when they can take people home. There are a million projects that we're we're trying to fund, so we need to get this, we're trying to get this from behind us. We're trying not to leverage our future.
So what's the, I guess, the total amount that um SIMPAC is contributing to the project when we sign this contract?
So so. If you look at the referendum number of two point seven, our number is nine oh four. There's another hundred to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that we spent ahead of time, which would add up to a million. But if we're gonna look at apples on apples, then that would really make the project two point eight. So let's just say of this two point seven referendum. We are contributing nine hundred thousand.
Can you?
Right. Nine hundred and four thousand. We've raised another hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Where where I, my goal is to get to two hundred. The reason why this entity exists is because if you want good acts there. You need to take balance sheet risk. The town's balance sheet can't take that risk. It can't lay out two hundred thousand dollars for a, an artist. Under the hope that we'll sell thirty-five hundred tickets. That's the whole reason for this thing to exist. We can take that balance sheet, but only the risk, but only if we get balance sheet to do it. I think we've done a very good job very quickly raising the funds that we can move both of these forward. But the town will look at this as a success if one, we have a good ribbon cutting and two, we have a good act, right? If we have just one or the other, I think it will be a failure.
Jeff knows this about me. I the how or why was was a past one, so that's good. We checked that box. So I'm just trying to figure out, my fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers. Make sure, since I don't see the numbers, what the the total contribution is, is a match with the previous commitment is. And then the rest of this is just good management of taxpayer dollars. So I just wanna make sure that that number is there, and I'm hearing that it is what the contribution was gonna be. Because we had an early um a line in a proposal and the early budget that put it over as a hun- I have a million thirty-two, which I know is higher.
Yeah, that's within the referendum and the bond language.
Right. So that's, I just wanna know, is that the number that SIMPAC's coming to the table with? And if it's that or above, then I'm sure.
I think the issue we have is, in our million-dollar number, there's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of design costs that aren't in that referendum number. And that's more or less the difference between them.
So.
At the time of the referendum, our number was eight hundred thousand dollars, and Mark has said, and remember I talked about us fighting sometimes?
I I do. I do.
We were there.
It is, yes.
We witnessed it.
So um we agreed to eight hundred. We we, you needed nine hundred, right? Because of this stuff, we all need nine hundred, like, I'm gonna throw a plug. We all need nine hundred, so we, so we now have nine hundred.
You guys have done an amazing job. Is that a cash in hand or are they still just uh pledge commitments at this point?
We've got, we've got enough cash in hand to meet our commitment for the project. Because we raised enough money to also have a working capital fund. But to do that, we'll empty the working capital fund. So what we're trying to do is continue to build those things as we go. But we have, we understood what your requirements were.
Cash.
To make sure you had cash when you were signing this contract. We have that amount. But what we love to do, the way we raise the money with our donors, is we set seventy-five cents for this, twenty-five cents for the working capital fund. And that's the way we've been built.
Thank you.
Yep.
Can I, I have one more comment. It's like, it's an elephant in the room comment, and it's a devil's advocate comment, which is, I'm good at the devil's advocate. If there is this need for this hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar contingency, right? And this group on this board is not here, or the board of finance that is there today is not here, and it is not approved to share the the cost. Are you willing to make up that cost? Because I can't say any of us will be here in November, December, January, nor the board of finance. So there's no guarantee that anybody sitting here is going to make up that difference. I mean, we could, alright? I mean, it depends on who's voting. So I just asking that question, I, because I don't know, we don't know if that's gonna happen, but I'm just, if it does happen.
We also know that we're gonna need it.
Oh, that's what I'm saying. We don't know if we're gonna need it. So I guess that's just, like I said, it's the elephant in the room, what happens then? But I I mean, I'm willing to move this forward and just hope that doesn't happen, but it may. We'll have to make a decision when that happens, and it may not be us making that decision.
Just rather than an elephant in the room, I think it's really the stick in our eye. Marcus, you're gonna come to my board on Thursday night for a board meeting to talk through this with our.
Put a stick in his eye.
That that um, yeah, so that's.
Yeah.
But 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 understand that. Nine hundred thousand dollars didn't fall from the tree. We revised half of our board to get to a fundraiser. Our executive director comes from a career of fundraising that we just hired. Our future is different than our past. We managed to raise a hundred thousand dollars for the sound towers. Previous to that, the most I'd ever seen are group twos, like thirty, blue thirties. We were, five years ago, we were incapable of this. Okay, so our future's gonna be very different than our past.
That's exciting.
I can just add one thing, this on the MOU, Wendy, that 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 this board did approve, moving forward, that new MOU does have a provision in it. Exclusive of this project, next act was already in the works, but for future capital, for that long-term senior deal, it was envisioned at a fifty-fifty split. If if that can be some guidance for our future discussions, um I I'm I'm comfortable signing the contract and continuing to have. Conversations with the PAC and and their leadership about uh some sort of shared solution. So, I mean, hopefully, we won't need it. Uh but, you know, I think you've done a great job raising the funds and and I, with that, it's up to this board.
Um and did you have, is there any revisions to this motion, or is this motion good enough as it is?
I chatted with with Bobby. He said that their, your motion was really superfluous because we're not asking for a supplemental at this point. Um so maybe just a motion authorizing the signature.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna ask for a motion effective July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, to authorize a town manager to execute a contract with Millennium Builders, Inc., the successful bidder for this project for amount up to six, two million, six, thirty-five, zero, zero, zero. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that passed. So we're in business, right? Can't wait to see what acts are coming. I've been waiting for that.
For a second, time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Alright, so.
Thanks for your. See you Thursday.
Okay.
See you Thursday, Jeff.
Okay, so now we're on the revise the supervisor recreation. Oh, that's why Tom had to stay.
Tom is still here.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tom.
It's all Kevin's fault.
It is my fault.
Adam, thank you.
That's okay. Kevin, you're, you have the floor.
I guess I could have asked.
Where else would I rather be on a Monday night?
I guess I could have asked uh that he wouldn't have to stay. There were uh just a couple of things on there on the requirement side that maybe he would rather uh. Uh comment on. There's a, in the requirements section, it it lists a master's degree in municipal recre- uh recreation. And um you know, the phys ed degree, and I I'm I'm just worried that we're a little bit of degree inflation on the role.
Agreed.
I want you to to advocate for what you need here, but I think it makes it harder to hire.
Yeah.
I I came from a career in higher education, so this hurts me to say, but I I think that you could get a lot done with a really highly motivated person who maybe didn't get there.
It doesn't it say with, or commit some experience?
It's a quote.
But it says, or a bachelor's degree and whatever, and I just, I don't even know that it needs to be in the minimum qualif- qualifications. I mean, I just think you can eliminate it.
I mean, I I think I'm a pretty smart guy. I don't have a master's degree, but.
Yeah, so, and and I'm a pretty stupid guy with one, so.
Well, it says in, yeah, it's kind of alludes, but it says, or in some closely related field, but it still says you need the masters or the bachelors, right? And you're saying that you have to.
I I think a a minimum bachelor's is 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 appropriate for the profession that these days, you know, in in a number of different fields, but.
Or a bachelor. Okay.
So I would I would just propose that we remove the master's degree requirement, and they'll be able to consider somebody who has a masters.
That's absolutely fine.
Um and then I, uh, it says the the um, the the certifications and all that on here, uh, just from a um. Long term, thinking, you know, we're getting them after a couple of years higher, but but to maintain, so they must obtain and maintain, et cetera, these certifications. I imagine our other descriptions have those already, and if they don't, then we should probably add them when we re- review them. So they have to maintain the certification as well.
Agreed.
Okay, because this would hurt us later if somebody loses it, and now that whatever. Alright, that's all for me. If if everybody agrees to that, then we can approve it.
I gotta comment on the master's degree comment.
We love master's degrees.
Well, I'm just saying.
They're wonderful people, are Wendy, I know.
They are. Wait, some people will look at this, if they have a master's degree and you're not saying a master's degree would be good, they might say, oh, this job isn't at my level. Right? And so leaving it in there may, you may hurt people with a master's degree from applying because you're not looking for somebody with a master's degree, if that makes sense to you.
Do we post the salary bands?
Yes.
I think the salary band is what attracts.
Okay, that, well, that's what people care about, not whether, okay. Alright, I'm fine with the changes, if you're fine with the changes.
Uh I, yes, I can, thank you.
Okay, so I'll move effective July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five to revise the recreation supervisor job description as discussed.
Sure, as amended.
As amended.
So moved.
Second.
Um all those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, revised thing. Um I'd like to ask for a.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tom. Oh, thanks, Tom.
You're welcome, man.
Um it likes for a motion to approve the minutes of June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Uh hang on, let me. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second? Second. Is there a discussion?
Yes, and Adam, yeah, go ahead. Sorry, Curtis, please. I defer, I defer to selectman Looney.
Curtis, go ahead.
Curtis, Curtis is waiting.
No, no, I mean, I was gonna say, was that, we heard the from public comment, and and I know you mentioned it, but in the, in in the, in the minutes, it does.
Okay, go ahead, Curtis. Yeah, I did.
She said that there was no rec, there was no um recognition of her comments, but there there are comments in there, it's just not as in-depth.
It's not embellished, yes. And do you think that we have a challenge with that, especially in public comment and getting intent and all that? We get the ability to to vote on whether or not our comments were fully explained and all that, but the public comment doesn't. These are also the minutes, these are not a transcript, and um I feel the 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 uh the emotion that comes from Susan in particular and others who have come public comment, but we also. but we also have sort of a strict responsibility in what we approve as the minutes, and maybe there's another mechanism, maybe through the first selectmen's reports or from other ways of of explaining um some of the more color that's added on top of the actual public comment.
Well, I I allude to my friend Heather Gatz, who has brought this up multiple times um about, you know, different different clerks do meetings differently at different levels.
Right.
And like our open space meeting was was like verbatim to what happens in the meeting. And so there may be as a happy medium, we did start including the minutes when the pers- when it starts on the meeting. So maybe we s- we detail that at least as a start for where people's comments are, so at least you can. I find it hard to find things and have to go watch everything to get to a point in the meeting.
Well, I'll just say, if if we were to say, for instance, that's that Kevin Beal spoke in support of something in public comment, there are a couple of folks tonight that, just honestly saying this isn't a criticism, I didn't know actually where they were on support or not support. So if we try to add that flavor, no, they spoke on the issue.
Yeah, true. Okay, well, with that, we'll just, we have the second most, let's just vote on it now.
Well, I have, I have one on on item F, but sorry.
Oh, you're two, with, oh, changes, right.
I just have a quick comment, though, is are we going to consider adding uh the, any written correspondence to minutes or to public audience, or how are we addressing? Cause, cause like public audience can come and and the general public can hear what they have to say by watching or reading the minutes, but any written correspondence we receive prior to the meeting or during the meeting, the general public doesn't say, yeah.
Let's let's table that and discuss uh min- minutes at another meeting.
Great, yeah.
Not at nine fifteen tonight.
Yes.
Um but do somebody have corrections to the minutes?
I just would like to add a sentence at the end of the second paragraph in item F that says, Mr. Beal was asked to clarify his intent and he restated the motion, period.
Got that?
No. Let me just pull them up, so I can do this while you're, no problem.
I have a quick question, as a guest commission clerk.
Yes.
I was encouraged just to follow what Kathy has been doing.
Are you okay with me doing, just for tonight? For now.
Okay, cause I don't wanna be.
Yeah. Are you Amanda?
Yeah.
Hi, Amanda, thank you for doing our minutes.
Don't, don't, don't out me, cause I'm.
No, we like, we've we've read your minutes.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just, I I mean, I started off like four years ago doing almost verbatim. Um but according to who I'm with, I I adapt to what, you know, what they want, but um.
We see both and we can decide which is the best.
Oh, come on.
No, I don't, I don't know what to do.
For the next meeting.
That's all certain.
Okay.
Leslie.
Item, item F, second paragraph, new sentence at the end, Mr. Beal was asked to clarify his intent and he restated the motion.
That's how I feel.
Agreed.
At the, at the very last.
I'm seeing it.
Yeah, yeah, if that's acceptable to everybody, that's my only intention.
Sure.
It should be the best.
So accepted.
Okay.
Okay, all all those in, you have, oh, you have a correction too?
No, no, I'm saying aye.
Oh, aye, okay, all those in favor say aye, aye.
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 Okay, so that's done, so now I have to ask for a motion. Oh, it's the executive session, which I forgot about earlier, that that was still coming. We have three here.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna, are they?
See the people or just people?
Yeah, who are the people?
Yeah.
So the one, you'll add Francine for letter B, but for A, B, and C, mark me in like H.
So could we say as needed, that will include the following individuals as needed?
Sure.
Is that acceptable?
So we don't get back out and.
So I'll move to go into executive session pursuant to CGS one two hundred six B and one two hundred six E um for the purposes of discussing pending litigation and a tax appeal.
Second.
And the successive collective bargaining agreement.
All those in favor say aye. Alright, so we're in executive session, I need a two minute break, great, Mark.
For over forty years, SCM has been the voice of our town.
Bringing us together through local programming, education.
And live broadcasts.
SCM isn't just about television.
It's about empowering our community.
Ensuring our voices are heard during government meetings.
And celebrating milestones.
Like our high school graduations.
But today, SCM faces a challenge.
Our funding structure is based on television subscriptions.
It's no secret, people have been cutting the cord.
With a shift to internet only subscriptions.
SCM receives less revenue.
Even though all our programming is freely available online.
We need your support.
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 Your donation can make a difference.
It will ensure that SCM remains open.
Continues to educate our youth.
And keeps our community informed.
Thanks to SCM, I've been honing my creative skills, helping me work towards my college degree.
SCM is crucial for keeping our community connected.
SCM isn't just here to broadcast local events, they're actually preserving Simsbury's history.
Join us.
Join us in preserving Simsbury's voice.
Simsbury's voice.
Together we can ensure that SCM continues to thrive.
For generations to come.
Visit our website.
Or scan the QR code on your screen to make your donation.
Every contribution counts.
Thank you for supporting Simsbury Community Media.
Where your town.
Your schools.
And your government come together.